Okay, thank you. We're on? We're on? Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, September 13th, 2021 Selectments Meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no public comment. We need to approve the warrants. Jason, you want to take that?
I make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2211 in the amount of $175,667.14.
The motion, is there a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I would like to amend that amount to 173821.97 because I do not want to vote on the administrative coordinator salary. I have too many unanswered questions about that time sheet. So if I could vote on the other salary, then you can also vote, the rest of you who want to, on that salary.
Okay, so you want to...
Amend it to 17382197, and then you can all vote on the other salary.
What was...I'm sorry, I got to write that down. What was it again? 821?
Yes, .97.
And the remainder?
97, 97 cents.
Yeah, I got it. Kathy's asking to have the motion amended to 173,821.97.
This is a courtesy for tonight. I'd like to vote on the other payroll. I just have questions, which we hopefully will talk about later.
Okay. So we'll...there's a motion amendment on the floor for...to amend 175,667.14 to On the amendment, is there a second?
A second, yeah.
And there's a second. Any further discussion on the amendment? Is he none? Kathy, did you want to explain why?
Well, it's an agenda item tonight, so I'm just asking it as a courtesy right now. I just have some questions on my conscience that I need to speak with the board about. And I would ask this one time to let me vote on the rest of the payroll.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there's a mo...we need to vote on the amendment and then the...amending the 175 to 173.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Clarification.
Sure.
Kathy, is it your request that the balance, what's the difference, $2,000 or something?
184517. It is the administrative coordinator payroll for this period.
You'd like to vote on that separately after we discuss the issue?
Well, no, I'm not going to vote on it tonight. I know in our agenda, I think we're addressing hours and work hours, and I think at that time, if those questions are addressed, then I would be comfortable voting on it at another meeting. But in this meeting, I would prefer, I don't feel comfortable voting on it.
Well, don't we have to make the payroll by law?
Yes.
You do. I have confidence.
How can we kick the chair?
I have just some concerning questions on it.
I think we could, I think we could vote on the amendment.
Yes.
If you choose, and then we could vote on, somebody makes the motion for the 1,875.17.
184517, yes.
What is it, 45...18?
Yes, 184517, yes.
Okay, we can do it separately.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to amend the 175,667.14 to 173,821. Any further discussion? None, all in favor of the amendment? Three opposed, two, three in favor, two opposed for the 173,821. Is there a...is there a motion for the 1, the 184517?
I'll make a motion for the 184517 for payroll warrant 2211.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a second. Any further discussion?
I'll just say for the record, if we're legally obligated to pay it, we should vote for it, and otherwise, what's our alternative?
Yep. Any other discussion? None, all in favor of 184517? Four in favor, opposed, one. Four in favor, one opposed. Thank you. Jason, the bill warrant.
I make a motion to approve bill warrant 2211 in the amount of $181,366.07, which breaks down to the town $52,771.19. Water and sewer, $9,226.35. Payroll withholding, $5,747.88. Light bills, $92,103.05. Grants and revolving, $21,517.60.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just have a question maybe for a future meeting. I noticed in the variance report that we haven't paid any bills to KP Law, and I believe we have used their services this year, especially on the trash contract, if not on the union contract a little bit. And I believe that's what I saw. I don't know if anybody else looked at those monthly reports. I just would like to know why we haven't received any monthly bills from them, if I'm reading that correctly. Someone else wants to double check.
Okay, we'll get that, we'll get that. See if we get that answer.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on the 181,366.07? None, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Approval of minutes from Board of Selectment meeting on August 16th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen meetings for August 16th, 2022.
Yeah, motion?
I'll second that.
And a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
I'm going to abstain. I showed up late, so I can't really speak to all of it.
Okay, four in favor, one abstention. Approval of the minutes on the Board of Selectment meeting on August 30th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for August 30th, 2021.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None.
I just have a, I just have a question because we did have a complaint about the posting of that meeting, so I didn't know if anyone knew the answer to the question. What happens if it's found, if they determine that we hadn't posted it properly? Do we redo that whole meeting? Do we have to redo all those minutes? I just was curious what the usual protocol is.
The...state your question again?
I just, I saw that there was a complaint regarding the posting of that meeting from a citizen in town.
Yes.
So if that's found that, I don't know, to be found that we didn't post it properly, what happens with that meeting?
I haven't got that answer, but we do have the response here. That'll be taken up later on.
Okay.
As far as the open meeting law complaint, that'll, that's under...
Oh, okay, thank you.
That's under discussion and possible vote.
I'll wait for that. I'm all set on the minutes.
All in favor? Appointments. Appointment of Joel Hernandez of Methuen to full-time officer effective October 1st, 2021. We have the recommendation of the police chief.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Joel Hernandez of Methuen to full-time officer effective 10/1, 21 through 6/30, 22, at the request of Chief Gillen.
I'll second that.
And a second. This is to fill the second of two recent vacancies. Any other discussion?
No.
None, all in favor? Unanimous. Appointment of Brad Legos to be appointed to alternate member of the zoning board of appeals effective September 13th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to appoint Brad Legos as an alternate member of the ZBA effective September 13th, 2021.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, yes, it says he will hold his appointment on the planning board, but he's elected to the planning board. So does that matter on what's going on here? I know we sometimes appoint people to multiple committees, but the planning board is elected.
Okay, this is a zoning board.
I know, so we're going to appoint him to the zoning board?
Alternate member.
Okay.
We did get an email on that.
No, I see it, I'm reading, I'm looking right at it. So we'll, I guess there will be times when he won't be able to vote on things, then? I'm not sure. Does the planning board...
I think Jason has the answer to that.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, as far as I know, he was appointed to the planning board as well. He's the only appointed member at this time because he never ran. They discussed that at the previous meeting, planning board meeting. However, yeah, I don't know that they use alternates that much, and so if it's something that comes up, I'm sure he'll excuse himself from voting if it's something he can't.
So when did we appoint him to the planning board?
I don't have that...Rebecca, do you have that information? You can share with us.
Rebecca Oldham, Director of Economic Development Planning Conservation. He was appointed most recently in Ju...excuse me, July, 1 of this year. He was appointed as to fulfill a role last year, and then he was appointed to fulfill an elected position until the annual election the year before that. So this is because the zoning board of appeals does not have enough members to vote on, or a quorum to vote on certain applications. Typically, what will happen is that an associate member, an alternate member, doesn't necessarily participate on a meeting basis, so they would be able to fill in when we needed to have that quorum.
Okay.
And we have not met the zoning board of appeals since November of last year.
Okay. So you think that we made a separate appointment of him to the planning board for this year? Because I recall telling Chairman Watson that we didn't need to appoint any planning board members because they're all elected.
I believe that was taken care of, or at least that was addressed at a following meeting. Somebody had mentioned, and they re-voted on the list.
It's my recollection that nobody ran for that position, and we appointed somebody.
I, yeah, I would just double check that we actually did that. We could always go back and redo it. But I recall specifically the night we first went through everything in June, I think, before...
I would agree with that because I did have a conversation with the town clerk, but I believe Catherine submitted a revised list, and you took a subsequent vote the following meeting to address that issue.
I hope we did.
If I'm not mistaken.
It was very confusing.
But this is just to make it so that we don't have to continue to keep on appointing a Board of Selectmen member to fill in for that one meeting, that we need to have that quorum. And he's volunteered to be that person in the interim, having known some of the other projects by being on the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Nice of them to step up.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor of Brad Legos, alternate member of the zoning board? Appointment of Jason DeJesus of Lee, New Hampshire, Cable Technician, effective April 15th, 2021. I backdated a little bit.
I saw that.
And Jason is here. I think everybody knows Jason.
I kept telling you we didn't appoint him yet.
What's the hurry?
He does have to have a Cory check, though. Have you done that?
I don't think so.
Okay, yeah, we do that just because once we get going on video videography, sometimes there's things with the library and children and just, and students at the high school and things like that, so.
Yeah, Catherine, Catherine will take care of that. I'll make, I'll make sure that I bring it up to her. Probably he's already been done.
I think so.
Okay, moving on.
So we haven't voted.
Oh, no. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
So I'll make a motion pending that Cory check is done.
Motion pending a Cory check.
I'll second that.
Second. Further discussion? None, all in favor?
Yeah.
Unanimous. Discussion and possible vote. At some point here, we're going to have to pull a stop at 6:30 for a public hearing on a liquor license transfer. Town Administrator Search Committee comments and requests.
Where are we now?
Is Mr. Lynch, is he on?
I am on, thank you.
Hello there. Why don't we open it up with your comments?
Thank you very much. Thank you for including us in your town administrator search process. We've had an opportunity to work with the screening committee over the last, I think, roughly six or eight weeks, a little bit later into the process than we normally commit to help the community, but we were certainly appreciative of the opportunity to do whatever we could to assist the committee in looking at the candidates that they had, trying to find additional candidates, and sort of working with them through the process. We ended up, the screening committee had 20 different candidates that had applied for the position of town administrator.
We did go through each one of the resumes with the, with the committee members, with a number of candidates identified as being plausible and possible candidates for the town, for this position, this first town administrator that Groveland will have. Unfortunately, a couple of the candidates that were identified right out of the gate were, did decide to withdraw from the process after we contacted them. So we were, we were down to the 18 that were considered. We then moved forward with a set of interviews with a number of those candidates that were identified by the committee. And those, those interviews, we had four people that we actually, that the committee actually interviewed, focusing on their backgrounds in municipal government, and spending time talking to them about their thoughts regarding being the first town administrator, looking at their leadership and management style. Because of the importance of this position relative to the town's finances, we spent quite a bit of time talking to them about their financial management skills, their preparation of an annual municipal budget, as well as capital budget, their personnel management experience. There was considerable interest on the part of the screening committee to understand their experience with collective bargaining. We spent some time talking to them about procurement, whether they were certified under the state procurement rules and regulations and law. Talked about grant management, how they've managed large projects for their communities. And then spent some time talking about how they would interact with the citizens, you know, their availability and accessibility to deal with constituents and citizen problems, and then how they would be working with the Board of Selectmen. So they were, they were good, good interviews of all of the candidates that were interviewed by the, by the committee. And at the end, the committee chose three candidates to move forward to you. Again, regrettably, one of the candidates, due to personal reasons, did withdraw, leading you to the two candidates that you are being presented to tonight. We have sent on the resumes and materials from those, those candidates. They are candidates that I think, from our perspective, were leading candidates as soon as we started looking at the resumes that you had received. I will note that it's a very competitive market right now for town administrators, town managers, really for every municipal position that's out there. And so, you know, the fact that you, you've only had 20 applications, isn't that startling to us because, you know, there are communities out there that, many communities that are looking for these, to fill these positions. And the, the two candidates that we, that the committee chose to move forward are Christine Lindberg and James Ryan. Christine Lindberg, and you have, you have this material, but I know that there's a viewing audience here on cable TV. Christine Lindberg is currently the Director of Human Resources for the town of Draken, larger community adjacent to Lowell. She's been here for four years. She, prior to that, she served as the chief aide to the town manager of Salisbury for roughly four years. And prior to that, she was the assistant to the town manager in, of the town of Hamilton. She has a bachelor's degree from Salem State College and a master's degree in public administration from Suffolk University. So she had some good municipal experience working in a municipal management office in both Hamilton and in the town of Salisbury. And she has been focused on human resources, but also serving as a procurement officer for the town of Draken over the last several years. So some good, solid experience actually in the administration of a town. In addition to that, I would note that she has been a selectman and a member of the planning board in her own community. She no, she no longer serves in those elected roles, but she, in the town of Middleton, somewhere close to you there in Groveland, she has served in the elected capacity for a period of time and been very involved in town operations there. James Ryan, your second candidate, is currently the chief admit aide and HRI director for the town of Salisbury. So you have two Salisbury candidates here. He's, he followed Ms. Lindberg in that position in 2017, and has been there for four years. And prior to that, he served for roughly four years for the town of Wellesley as a finance and budget analyst. Again, a larger community, but served in that finance and man, and budget role there. He too has a bachelor's degree in liberal arts from the University of Massachusetts at Lowell and a master's degree in public administration from Suffolk University as well. So both have good municipal experience. It's a type of position that is, you know, I think a good position for both of them at this point in time. Both very well qualified, both come with very good references. As part of our process, we did do a reference check for each one of these candidates, and we've compiled the comments that we received from each one of the references that the candidates provided us. We are familiar with both of the candidates from our involvement with municipal government here in Massachusetts, as well as our involvement with the Suffolk University and University of Massachusetts Lowell. And the, we also conducted a background check in terms of their Cory. We did an eye Cory for each one of these. We checked on their employment, we verified their employment, we verified their education, and we, we think both of them are good candidates for the town to consider. And we're ready to move forward with the board next week in interviewing candidates on the 21st. So, and we could talk about that process if you'd like, but I'd happy to take, be happy to take any questions now about what we, what has been the process to date. Again, we came in late into the process, so I can't really speak to what happened before in terms of outreach, but I can certainly speak to anything regarding when we started working with the committee back in August.
Okay, again, the candidates, Christine Lindberg, she is the Director of Human Resources in the town of Draken.
Yes.
James Ryan, he is the town manager's chief assistant, also the human resources director in Salisbury. Bernie, just bring into your attention what I spoke with you about last week, the information that I found out. It, again, it, it surprises me that the background check or the company that we hired didn't pick up that information. Can you explain why that didn't happen?
No, we were aware of the, the, the law, the legal case in the, in the matter that you're referring to in the town of Draken. It's not something that, you know, we consider disqualifying. Lawsuits, we do background checks in terms of, as I say, in terms of Cory, education, employment, and then we do the reference checks. We look at their backgrounds with any social media searches that we do, or any internet computer-assisted research that we do. And so we were aware of the case. We've read the case, we've read the arbitration award that's related to the case. There's nothing in that that is disqualifying, certainly from our perspective. When we go back, after a screening committee identifies candidates, we go back and we check their backgrounds and references, and if we hear of anything or see of anything that's disqualifying, we go back to the screening committee and identify that ahead of time. In this particular case, a lawsuit is not disqualifying. It's, it's one person's claim against another. There's nothing of any substance there that, at this point in time, that would disqualify a candidate from being considered.
Well, when I spoke with you last week, and I told you what I have, what I had located...
Yep.
And you, you indicated you really didn't know anything about it. You said, "Well, let me look into it, and I'll get back to you," and then, so you got back to me about an hour and a half later.
Yep.
So it, and I spoke to a couple people, including the chairman of the committee...
Correct.
And they didn't know anything about it. Don't you think that's something that should have been brought to the attention of either the committee or, or to the Board of Selectmen? To me, it, it raises a flag, a red flag, and more so for the consulting company that they didn't, they weren't forthcoming with the information. And I know you did say it, it's probably nothing, but I, I'm just wondering whether, I got the impression that you never, you didn't find it until after I spoke to you about it, and then you did the same thing that I did. You looked it up. You looked, you looked the case up.
No, that's not, that's not quite accurate. I mean, I, I will admit that you caught me a bit off guard. I was in the middle of something when you contacted me, and I did pick up the call that came through from, from you, and I said, "Look, let me, let me just go through the notes and see what we have on this." And we did have it, and it, you know, we found it the same way that you did. We, we saw it online, and we, we did background on it. And actually, we have copies of the, we had copies of the materials that relate to it. We have the lawsuit itself, as well as the arbitration order that we've obtained. And, you know, again, the fact that a public manager is sued is not a disqualifying, you know, event. So, you know, it's picked up, but it's not a, you know, it's not something that would necessarily, it's something you can question, you can ask the questions of a candidate, you know, but it's not something that we would say to a, you know, potential candidate. You can't, you can't apply for this job, or you can't be considered for this job.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say it was a disqualifying. It just shocks me that the committee didn't know about it. I spoke to the chairman of the committee and a couple of other members. They didn't know about it, and I didn't see anything in this paperwork that the Board of Selectmen got indicating that, that that was, that was the case.
Well, you wouldn't see it in the, you wouldn't see it in the materials you received because the materials that you received are simply the information that we have from the references and the people who know these candidates that reflect their thoughts and their experiences with these candidates, which is designed to help you evaluate these candidates and question these candidates. With regards to the, the discussions with the committee, again, from our perspective, we flagged things, we, in the past year, we have flagged candidates that have not completed full resumes. We've flagged candidates that have not been accurate in their education. We've flagged candidates that have had checkered job histories that are problematic. And they have, we go back to screening committees, and they change their recommendations. In this case, this does not rise to that level. This is part of the business of being in town administration, is that there are going to be grievances, there are going to be arbitrations, there's going to be lawsuits, and these are all brought forward, and they have to be played out. But there's nothing that, again, nothing that's disqualifying that would merit us going back to the committee and saying, "Okay, this can..." going back to the committee and saying, "Okay, this candidate isn't, there's a problem here."
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I interrupt on a point of order. I don't seem to have any information in my packet.
Neither do I.
Well, she's speaking as if we have a packet in front of us. I have nothing.
You got the, you have the candidate?
No, I don't have that.
You don't have the candidates?
No, I do not.
It was sent to us.
Well, this is my hard copy and there's nothing in here.
This was sent to us during the week. It was sent on, I believe it was sent on the 8th.
Okay, so she just didn't?
Joe Demore sent it to us on the 8th.
Joe, so that comes from Joe Demore, not from?
Yes.
Not into our packet? Okay. I assumed that it would be in our packet the way you were speaking tonight. You kept saying the information you have in front of you, and that's why I went through it three times.
All right. Any comments as far as to Mr. Lynch about?
Yes, I have a question.
The procedures that we're going to go through on the 21st when we question these two candidates?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For Mr. Lynch, how many members of the Board of Selectmen have you spoken with thus far prior to this interview?
Just the Chair.
Do we have notes from that conversation that are going to be shared with the full board so that we're all on the same page, or what?
The only, the only, I can summarize the conversation very quickly. The Chair called me last week. He had seen this, you know, he got the packet from Mr. Demore. He called asking me about the lawsuit that had, against the town, several Draken town officials regarding a matter. And I indicated that, "Let me go back and look and see what we have on that." We went back, I looked at it, as I just described. I called the Chair back and I basically told him that we, you know, upon review, yes, we were familiar with it and that we discussed it, Chair and I discussed it. And I indicated that it, you know, it certainly wasn't something that would prevent us from moving this candidate forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on the procedure to, again, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
How you doing? Questions, both candidates, the two that you've presented to the board, both have degrees from Suffolk in public administration. Is that correct? Was that a prerequisite for your decision to have a degree in public?
You know, I have to go back and, again, we were in here at the beginning of the process. I do think a master's degree is probably preferred in your, when the town went out and did its search. But to tell you the truth, I, you know, we weren't involved in that part of the process. But I, it's something that we generally recommend that, if possible, that a master's degree in public administration be there.
In the process, did you review the other 17 or 18 resumes and applications?
I looked through them, yes. And a number of, a number of the candidates did have master's degrees. There were some that did not. There were some that had law degrees, some that had planning, master's degree in planning. So it really, you know, it was across the spectrum. But we always, when we're involved in a search, we always recommend that a master's degree be preferred, a master's or an advanced degree be preferred.
Okay. And what about experience? You know, I work in the private sector and the public sector is distinctly different. Were any of the candidates qualified in, you know, experience through a private industry and managing a business? And did you look at them and were they ruled out because they weren't in a government Was that a disqualifier, if there were any?
I would say it's not a disqualifier. Again, I go back to it that, you know, we weren't there at the beginning of this process. We came in at the end of the process that?
When you say, excuse me, when you say that, did the committee pre-select these and then they gave you the final candidates out of that?
The committee set, put the ad out, identified the requirements of the position and put the ad out. It did not, and then we worked with the committee to identify which candidates were most suitable for being interviewed. And municipal experience certainly was preferred. Likewise, a master's degree was preferred. But ultimately, these decisions as to who to interview and who to move forward to the board were committee decisions, not decisions that are made by community paradigm.
So the fact that, the fact that out of 20 candidates, both of them are Suffolk graduates, that's just a coincidence?
Well, yeah, it is, it is a coincidence.
It wasn't a preference, I'll be pointed in my questioning. Was it a preference?
It was not a preference. The other, the other candidate, there was a third candidate that was considered or that was being moved forward, is a better way to put it, that withdrew, that was not a Suffolk graduate.
Okay. All right.
I myself have a master's degree in public administration from UMass Amherst, so I tend to be biased that way.
Did, in the process, well, did you interview these people?
I was, I was part of the interview process. In fact, the process that we used was one that I understood you wanted us to use with your interview, where I facilitated the interview by directing the questions and allowing the committee members to participate in the process directly through follow-up questions and drilling down into the responses of the candidates. So yes, I did participate in the interviews.
All right. Did you ask the candidates what their vision was for Groveland, if any? I mean, was that part of it? What's their?
No, but I think that's a good question for the board to consider. The, I don't, I wouldn't say that that was necessarily a direct question that the, that the committee looked at. The committee was focused, I would say, more on skills and experiences as opposed to specific to Groveland vision. I think that's, that's an excellent question that I think you should be able to ask, particularly as we, you know, go through, you know, following up on their skills and experience. It's a great question.
Yeah, just, you know, personally, bringing in here, my concern is, I mean, everyone has opinions and, so do I. You know, it's important to me as to, you know, who we choose, what their philosophy is on the town, whether or not they're, you know, want to expand, stay the same, you know.
Yeah, I think we talked, we talked some at, you know, the ideas they had or experiences they had relative to development. The thing to keep in mind, there's always this fine line, if you will, that the vision of a community is often the jurisdiction or the scope of the elected officials that are policy-setting for the town. Because you, as the board, represent the values of the residents. The administrator is, to a large extent, your arm in making that vision a reality. So you can take someone, that's the administrator in Groveland, and executing your vision as the elected officials of what Groveland should be. You could take that same person and move them to, you know, Beckett, Massachusetts, and have them be executing the vision of the Board of Selectmen of Beckett or, you know, a community on the Cape. They're administrators, they're professional managers, not the policy setters. That's your, the select board, Board of Selectmen draw.
So you, they were neutral on that? They weren't asked?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, you're making me go back into my master's studies days where we discussed that, the very question of administrators are neutral. You know, the policy setters are the ones that are supposed to be the ones that have a particular, you know, idea of what something should be. Certainly, you can draw upon the thoughts, the experience of the administrator, but at the end of the day, they're executing, you're deciding. You know, the example I often give, I gave it when I was a manager myself, I was a manager for 30 years, that, you know, you can essentially, the board, the board or the, wants you to get them to a certain point, they tell you where you want them to, they tell you where they want to go. You have to decide as a manager or as an administrator, the way to get there, the route to get there, the process to get there. You know, if you want to go to Boston, they get to decide, if you want to get there, you tell them when you want to get there. They get to decide for you the route you're going to take and the vehicle you're going to take because that's going to determine whether you get there on time. You can't hold them accountable if you tell them to take back roads and you want to get to Boston in half an hour. But if you tell them you want to get to Boston in half an hour, they get, they have to be able to come to you and say, "This is what we need to make that happen."
One more question and I'll be all set. Did you get into why they wanted to leave their current positions, transition? Did you go through that?
Why they wanted to leave their current positions?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, a lot of people want to move up in the world and...
We did, we did get into that. We got into the fact that for both of these individuals, they would like to be the town, a town administrator. Both of them like the town of Groveland. Both of them have an interest in running their own organization. And so this is, this is a great opportunity for both of them. It's, you know, they've done the background work, they've done the position, both of them served in Salisbury for Neil Harrington. They've both been in a position where they've dealt with the projects, the budget issues, the human resource and procurement issues, constituent issues, from the standpoint of being the number two. Both would like to be the person in the main office, making those decisions and working directly with the board.
Thank you.
Anybody, any other questions? Bill?
I have a question, but it's more directed to you, Mr. Chair. You seem to have information on one of the candidates that none of the rest of us have. Can you tell us how you came about that information?
Sure. I went onto the, I went onto the computer, and I'm not a computer guy, went onto the computer, I Googled the candidate's name.
Did you do the same for the other candidates?
I haven't got to that one yet. I still, I'm still vetting this, the first one that I was working on. It, I only had it since, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday, and I didn't get a chance to get through both of them.
Just the woman.
And again, I'd be, I'd be happy to send on the background materials for that we have regarding the suit itself and the arbitration decision.
Yes, thank you.
That you can have.
Any information?
Any other questions?
It's, I will say, it is, just one more, one more comment, Mr. Chairman, is that, you know, it is an unfortunate reality that when you're in a, when you're in a position in really any industry, but, you know, public management is certainly one that, it certainly is true, is that situations like this are going to come up. There was a question raised just tonight in your own meeting regarding the open meeting law and claims that the board didn't follow the open meeting law. In other communities, that would be a, you know, perhaps here, that would be a major issue that would get headlines. You know, that's, those claims, those issues come up and, you know, you just have to get the full background. And in this case, there was a, there's been a claim made. There's been no decision by a court on what's, what the status of this is. It's been lingering for a couple of years now and will probably linger for another four or five years.
Thank you. Jason, you got anything?
No, I don't.
Kathy?
No, I'll wait for the interviews. I'm looking forward to it.
I know we wanted to speak with Bernie about how we, how we're going to run the interviews. I know he's going to ask some questions. And how long do you think you're going to need on each candidate, Bernie? Do you think an hour on each candidate between your questions and the board would be, is going to be enough?
I think it should be. If we run a little bit over, we'll just have the second candidate wait a little bit. And we ask them not to sit in the same, you know, not to come into the room while the interviews, you know, just good practice, good, you know, appropriate that they stay in the other room, in another room. But, yeah, I would think an hour, maybe just a little bit more. And I'd be happy to facilitate the questions and then have the board. I mean, I think that, the question that was raised by one member regarding the vision of the, for the town of Groveland, what their thoughts were on that, what they'd like to, what they know about Groveland, what they'd like to see in Groveland, how they, how they balance development versus community character, those are great questions and ones that the board members will be able to go at. And I think that's, you know, what I like to see is a dialogue. I like to see a real conversation between the candidates and the board members as opposed to a, more of a sort of question and answer format. I like to see the, see their personalities come out.
And I thought that, I discussed it with the, with the members here, but I think we'll also do, at the end of the interviews, we'll do an executive session in case we need to discuss amongst ourselves something, some things on the candidates.
I don't think we can do that.
You may just want to check, you may just want to check with town councilor.
Yeah, okay. All right. So you don't, you don't think we're going to need to do that?
You can't do that.
I'm asking him, Kathy, please.
Yeah. I think that you're limited with regards to what you can discuss in executive session.
Okay.
Really, the only, the only real decision to, the only, Mr. Chair, you and I can talk a little bit about this offline because you're going to be managing and chairing the meeting. And I'd be happy to talk to the other board members about it as well. But, you know, you really, this is, this part of the process has to be done in open session. And, but, you know, talk about contract negotiations would take place in executive session.
That will, once we offer the job, that would be in executive session and?
The other, the other point I make, Mr. Chair, is that board members should know, and I think everyone, I think all the board members have my contact information, but between now and next Tuesday, if you have specific questions regarding either of the candidates or the process, I always make myself available, as the Chair took advantage of, to just, to speak on the phone or, you know, set something up through an email to address your questions, your concerns, so that you're comfortable. I do that in every community. Some communities take advantage of it and some don't. The ones that don't, I always get a little nervous about. So really, feel free to just give me a call and, you know, if I'm not available right then, we can, we can talk at another point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more thing? As one, one of the three dropped out, I mean, I was hoping to have more than two to choose from, but, you know, it is what it is. If that's all it's, if that's all the people that are qualified, was there a fourth that was potentially on deck here to move up?
The committee discussed that and chose to only move the three forward. And once the, with the understanding that if the third, if one of the three dropped out, there would only be two moving forward.
Is it, is it possible for the board to see all 20 resumes?
No. No. You know, that's, and... You know, that's, and, and, and again, this isn't my process, this is, there's a couple things here. One, again, we came late, but even if we'd come in early at the beginning, I would tell you that, no, this is the, once the, once the board gets those resumes, you violated the confidentiality of the process, because once it goes to you, it becomes a public record. And candidates were applying with the understanding that they, their information would remain confidential unless they were a finalist. That's the way the state law works.
So unless the board was the screening body?
Even if the board, the board, the board can't be the screening body under the open meeting law. There's specific rules, there's a specific exemption, in fact, under the open meeting law to allow the screening committee to meet in executive session to get this information, to interview the candidates. If it goes to the, if the board would be a, acting as the screening committee would still be the board, and therefore, everything would be a public record. And again, I could, I would refer you to your attorney at KP Law to discuss that.
Yeah, I just want, is that waivable, do you know?
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
The candidate, is it waivable, the confidentiality?
Oh, is it waivable?
Yeah.
Well, what they could do is, I suppose, we could ask the candidates if they minded if they were, their name was made public. I've never had anyone ask me that question.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to actually see them, and if they'll waive and send me a copy, I mean, I want, I want to see what we passed up and what we decided on. I'm just, you know, I understand we have a subcommittee of sorts, but it's ultimately the Board of Selectmen's decision to get the right person in here, and I kind of feel like I'm in the dark as to what they, what they rejected.
Well, it's the Board of Selection, the Board of Selectmen's decision to, if, to, who to appoint, but it's the screening committee that you would, you entrusted to narrow the field down. If you're trying to get to, if you want to see, if you want to see everybody that ever applied for that job, then you should have set up a different process where you, it was known right up front that you were going to have their names be made public. I suppose if you, if you, that's something, you know, certainly, we could talk to town council about, and ask if these candidates were remaining interested, and they could decide whether to go public or not.
Yeah, because I'm not sure, I mean, even after we speak with these people, if they're the best out of, out of the 20, so.
Well, that's the way, that's, that's the way the process works in Massachusetts. You know, in other states, it's all, it's all done behind closed doors, and so people can apply and remains behind closed doors.
I don't know that I want to be, follow the leader on that, it's all done behind closed doors. If somebody's interested in the job and they're okay with saying, hey, here I am, why filter it out behind the scenes, you know?
I think you have to, you have to essentially reopen your process.
We, we have open meeting law, it seems like a closed, closed meeting law, but that's why I asked if it's waivable.
You have to reopen your process, I think.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else got anything for Bernie? Nobody?
Bernie, can I email your, any specific questions to you as opposed to taking up your time and my time on the phone?
Absolutely.
Good, okay.
Bernie, I think, unless anybody on the board has got any questions, I think we're all set.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see you at 5:30 on the 21st.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Next, Council on Aging Van Update. Can we do that quickly? We got like five minutes. Is it going to take longer than that? We have a public hearing at 6:30.
She needs a microphone.
How about, he's going to get you a microphone. Identify yourself for everybody.
Denise Gilman, Council on Aging Director. The van is ready for bid. Did you, I'm not sure if you got this letter for tonight, it was supposed to be last week, so I'm not sure if Catherine gave it to you, so I'm going to give it to you now. The COA.
Yes.
You do have it?
Yes.
Okay. So the COA is requesting, based on a meeting from two weeks ago, that, we're requesting approval from the selectmen to invoke the Town of Groveland Board of Selectmen policy disposition of surplus goods and equipment valued at less than $10,000 with that newly approved Section 4 of the policy. The Council on Aging is requesting permission from the Board of Selectmen to allow usage of the assets from the, from the trade-in of the bus to be used towards the purchase of the new bus. And that will be based on the new policy that you voted on, I believe, four weeks ago during the meeting. And that policy is the one I've stated here. Disposition of surplus goods and equipment of Groveland Board of Selectmen.
Could I have that, please? I don't find it in my packet.
You know, I have the letter.
It might be on the back.
Are you kidding me? Oh, my God.
Yeah.
What's the value of it, of the, approximately?
Approximately, I have three people that had previously gave us quotes on the bus, and only one of them would give us a trade-in at all, and that trade-in was for $3,500.
$3,500?
Yes. The other two did not want the bus at all.
They looked at it, and the one that was over $3,200 didn't?
Yeah, they gave us a quote without, without the trade-in at all, they did not want it.
Okay.
So...
So we need to vote on whether to allow the Council on Aging to trade in the bus valued at less than $10,000. Any questions for Denise?
This is part of, this is part of the procurement with, that Rebecca's working on?
It's part of the procurement, and it's based on the policy that was changed, that Section 4 was allowing you to make a decision on a case-by-case basis on how the disposition of material would go, less than $10,000. And that was a Section 4 that was added to the policy.
I know, and that was added rather hastily. I just don't know, is that the town attorney looked at this new policy and said, it's okay, it's a go? I would assume town attorney looks at the policies that we vote. Has town attorney looked at it and said, it's okay to have this, case by case? You're not the town attorney, I'm just asking.
Hasty?
Yeah, we made it.
It wasn't hasty.
It was like the back of a bottom of a piece of paper, I mean, we did not deliberate. I just want to make sure that we don't, this, this van procurement went south once before, I want to just make sure it goes smoothly. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it as long as the town attorney says, or, and Rebecca say, yep, this can work. So you get that, two, two votes on it, and I'm okay with it. I think that's a simple matter, right? You send the policy to the town attorney.
Rebecca, didn't you get, you get approval from the town council on that?
I did not get approval from town council on the updated policy. I did have them review the contract that I put together as part of the bid document to make sure that they approved as to form.
Okay.
And it did state in that contract that there would be a trade-in allowance, so I don't know, I mean, that, that doesn't speak to your specifics about the policy now.
Okay. Thank you.
We voted on the policy, what's wrong with the procedure? It wasn't hasty, it was voted on.
I guess...
We deliberated it, we discussed it, it was voted on, so I object to your statement, it was hasty.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the trade-in?
Mr. Chairman?
I'll make a motion, we approve the trade-in and end the...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
State your point of order.
Yes, you allowed Selectmen McDonald to just...
Don't need to babysit everything.
But this is what I'm talking about.
Run to town council.
Motion on the floor will take precedent.
Excuse me, Mr. ...
Is there a second on the motion?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Are you going to allow Selectmen McDonald to speak with me that way, to say those kind of things?
You're going to say hasty and you pointed comments, you're going to get it.
I'm not going to get anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, both of you, both of you, knock it off. There's a motion on the floor to approve, allow the trade-in of the current van from the Council on Aging. Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like...
Kathy, go ahead.
Yes, if we could just make sure that we just have Rebecca touch base with town council, that we have it in a policy, case-by-case basis, we can use it, that's fine.
I think we already ran through with it, with the town council to find out if we could...
We have it in the contract that we have a trade-in, but the council has not seen our new policy, that's all.
Okay. The motion on the floor, did you want to make an amendment to the motion?
Yes, please, just to have her make the phone...
Make the motion.
To have the director of...
The amendment, I'm sorry, the amendment.
Thank you. To have the Director of Planning, Economic Development, and Conservation just touch base with town attorney on the phone and make sure that our policy does what the contract needs.
There's a motion, there's a motion for a, an amendment to the main motion. Is there a second on the amendment?
I'll second it.
And a second on the amendment to get the okay from town council. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Kathy, maybe, how this all happened in my mind was, all the assets in the town belong to...
If I could, if I could interrupt you, we're at...
Can we come back to this?
We'll have to come back to it, we're, we have a public hearing, we went over a minute or so. Following notice, we read, "The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 13th, 2021, at 6:30 PM at the Town Hall. 183 Main Street in Groveland, on the application for amendment of an annual wines and malt beverage liquor license to a package store. All alcoholic beverage licensed at Jerry's Variety, 15 Elm Park, Groveland, 01834. Description of the premises. 15 Elm Park, two-story building with a store on the first floor, approximately 750 square feet, one entrance, one exit." Once the chair has read the motion, enter the public, roll call vote, enter for the public hearing. Roll call enter for the public hearing. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Is Hardy Patel and John Meridian, Attorney for Hardy Patel, present with some information, are they on the computer? Who's on?
Yes, this is Attorney John Meridian, Democas Law Offices. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yep, I'm here on behalf of Etlac Corporation and Hardy Patel, who's the sole officer, director, and operator of the business. What we're seeking tonight is approval of amending the license from a beer and wine package store to an alcohol package store. Hardy bought the store back in, end of 2018, early 2019, has operated it for a few years now, no violations, you know, he wants to add alcohol, liquor as an additional item for sale, in addition to the beer and wine. So with that, I'll welcome any questions the board may have on the application. Hardy is here too, turns to any questions the board may have also.
Attorney Meridian, just so that we're all clear, right now, your client has a annual wine and malt beverage license, and they want to change it to a, petition to change it to a all-alcoholic beverage license. Is that...
That's, that's correct. If the board approves this amendment tonight, he would turn in his beer and wine license for the all-alcohol license.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else want to speak about this matter? Anybody on, Jason?
I see.
No? Anybody on the board want, got questions or comments to Attorney Meridian? Or comments? See none?
I didn't, was there an application in the packet? I didn't see it, and...
I don't see it.
No, we got it here somewhere.
Either in the email packet or in the packet today, so...
Yeah, I got the paperwork to sign if it's, we have a, we have a letter from Attorney Meridian. Enclosed, please find the following documents regarding the above referenced application for transfer of all, an annual wine and malt beverage liquor license, messages to Department of Revenue, certificate of good standing, ABBCC online application forms, including the monetary transmittal form with proof of ABBCC payment, change of category amendment application, application statement, corporate resolution authorizing the President, Hardy Patel, to apply for the change of category application. And we have that, the documents from the Department of Revenue. We have another one from the Department of Unemployment Assistance, application for the amendment to the change, and amendment, application for amendment, and the applicant's Everything looks to be in order. Any questions for Attorney Meridian?
No, just a question for the chairman. I haven't voted on something like this before, you know, kind of new member to the board. Are we supposed to review that paperwork before we vote, or is this something that we don't?
It's, we have a public hearing where, tonight, where anybody that, anybody could speak in favor, anybody opposed? We had the attorney for the applicant speak in favor, we haven't heard anybody opposed. We can, if we have a motion, we can do a roll call vote. Is there a motion to grant or deny the license?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant the license.
Motion to grant the license, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
And a second.
I have a question. So we, if we grant it now, this goes for just one year, and then they come back for the same license for next year? Is that how this works?
Yes.
Okay.
Same as we do a beer and wine license.
Oh, okay, okay. And we don't, we're not aware of any complaints on this business, so...
Nope. They would have voiced theirs tonight, everybody was properly notified of the public hearing, the butters, et cetera, and...
Was it put into the newspaper?
If it was.
It was. So we have a copy of the posting in the newspaper?
I don't have a copy of that here.
The, the advertisement ran on August 30th.
Oh, thank you.
And I emailed today to Ms. Warden the copies of the green cards, and she's receiving the originals tomorrow morning of the signed green cards for the butter notices.
Oh, thank you. Okay, very good.
Yeah, I didn't see that...
I have all those documents in, on my desk in a green folder, all the original documents.
All right, thank you. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Bill, go ahead.
I know Jerry's Variety has been a good neighbor and a good business for a number of years, and I'm all for, for business in Groveland as opposed to less. My only concern is, I would have liked to reviewed those documents prior to having this vote, and it's a shame that none of us did get to review them except for you. And that's my only comment.
Roll call to, we have a motion and a second to approve, Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bill?
Having not been able to review any of the documents prior to this, I must abstain.
Abstain, and myself in favor. Four in favor, one abstention. Thank you, councilor.
Thank you very much, have a good night. Thank you, thank you guys, this is Hardy Patel.
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you for the paper.
Welcome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a roll call vote to close the public hearing and return to a regular meeting. Dan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Denise?
Yes.
You back up. I think we left off with, Bill had a.
Yeah.
Had a comment.
So Kathy, I think that the, what we did was more to protect, all the assets do belong to the Board, right?
Right.
So I, I think the policy was put into place to make sure that we got the greatest value that we could get, that some of these things weren't going to trade in for 3,500, and we could get seven grand on the open market.
So it would come to you. That's what the first policy was for?
Yes, that was the idea.
Oh, okay, I get it.
To make sure that, that we were getting the greatest bang for our buck when it came to trading in some of this old equipment.
Okay.
And it wasn't going, you know, with a wink and a nod over to somehow.
I understand better, thank you.
So, you know, there was, there was, there was definitely a method behind the madness.
Okay.
And that was just to have more control and oversight over how these things were moving around, and, and then to offer up the availability of some of this equipment to other departments that may have a use for them without a cost.
Right, and if I recall, the original policy then didn't allow you to review on a case-by-case basis and use it for trade-in.
Right.
And why was that? Was that just an oversight, or?
I couldn't tell you.
Oh, okay.
It was just again to keep the control within the town.
Right.
It still does because it's called a case-by-case basis. So it still allows the town to continue to have that, the, the.
Control, okay.
Items allowed to go and what is not.
Right, so, so the original.
Internal document.
Right, so then the original policy allowed you to sell it or give it to another department, but not trade in. Is that what, what we went, that's what we went around and around about?
Oh, they could trade it in too. They could basically do whatever they wanted.
Well, why did we have to revise the policy then?
Mr. Chair?
We revised the policy so that we could have better control and visibility so that she couldn't, they couldn't, for example, the Council of Aging couldn't trade in that van for 3,500 when it was actually worth 7,000 on the open market. The town would lose 3,500 dollars in value in that. But so, we would, if that case were true, we would force the Council on Aging to sell it on the open market for 7,000 as opposed to trading it in for 3,500 and losing the, the difference in the value.
Or turn it over to the town to have them in turn sell it to somebody.
Somebody else.
Or use it for another department if needed.
Okay, so, so we revised it just to allow though, on a case-by-case, that the Board of Selectmen can say, go trade it in?
Right, or, or, you know, don't trade it in, we can get more.
Or we want to sell it.
Or we want to keep it.
But don't trade it in, the Highway Department can use it, or don't trade it in.
We're going to pass it down to another department, that sort of.
Okay, yeah.
You can use.
I, I understand better, thank you. Okay, I'm good with this.
So I don't think we need to bother Town Council then?
No, I guess not. I was just kind of, I was trying to remember the whole discussion. I remember there, that our policy did not allow them to do this trade-in for some reason. I was kind of confused by why the policy had been written that way.
Mr. Chair?
Do ahead, Dan.
I think that policy was implemented back when the fire truck was in the works, the ladder truck. So, and I believe ultimately that old Mack truck was sold. It wasn't traded in. So I think the Fire Department bought a Rosen, something or other. But a manufacturer of a fire truck doesn't necessarily want a 30-year-old truck. So they, you basically give it away on a trade. So I think the policy was.
Oh, okay.
I think it was dated 2015. I mean, apologize for not remembering all the more detail than that back then, but I think we needed that policy for that reason. So they just wouldn't say, oh, we'll trade it in. They only gave us X.
Oh, I get it.
Without, without trying.
You mean the little shell game, yeah.
Well, no, I don't know.
They don't really give you value.
I don't know that there'd be anything, you know, devious or anything, they'd buy it. It just might be more of a convenience thing. It's like, we don't want to put it out for sale.
Right.
You don't market it.
All right.
If it's a big enough number, I mean, I'm not going to spend, you know, whatever, 10 hours trying to sell something for 50 bucks, you know, cost benefit.
That's the other thing.
But if it's a big thing, and it might be a Mack fire truck, maybe you could get 100 grand for it, and maybe they only got 15 for it.
Oh, okay. No, I understand.
But at least try before you say, oh, we can't get anything for it, now trade it in. When you, oftentimes, a trade-in's nothing more than a junket. Would you agree with me on that, Ms. Donio, on a car?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So this is such a small value that if they'll give us a trade-in, I think you got to look at the totality. If you have three bids and one's better than the other, you look at the sum total with and without the trade and get the best deal for the town. I mean, it's just math.
Yeah, they all, it, the bid requires the trade-in, so they'll all be equal.
Yeah, but, but I wouldn't want to, if you're the negotiator.
That makes sense.
I wouldn't want to tie your hands behind your back if they'll give you something for your money.
I understand. You, you just wanted, I get, you wanted to get the most money. Okay, that's fine.
Remove the question.
Yep.
We, we had a motion and a second.
Yep.
I think Dan made a motion. No, did you make the motion?
I withdraw the, I'll withdraw the amendment. We're good. I'm good. I understand why it was put in place. It makes sense.
Motion and a second.
Yep.
To approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
How soon do you think you'll get it?
I don't know.
Okay.
Oh, that's good.
No, a month.
A month? Or a couple of weeks.
Still not bad.
No.
Being time for winter.
That'd be nice.
Maybe. Next on the agenda is an open meeting, open meeting law complaint, and this was the, the information that we received was an open meeting law violation that was filed. And the, the person that filed it, and I don't have the name right here, basically stated that the Chairman of the Board of Select failed to provide the required meeting notice for the Board's 8:30 meeting. State public meeting law requires that the meeting agenda be posted for a public review 48 hours prior to the meeting. The notice must either be provided via the town's website or in a location at the Town Hall that is accessible to the public 24/7. Neither, he states neither of these criteria were, were met. The fact of the matter was, the fact that the meeting was posted within the Town Hall on the Clerk's Board before noon on 8/26/2021, which is the official Town Meeting Posting Site. The agenda was also posted to the front door of the Town Hall as the typical posting site of the Agenda website if the website was not working properly. There was no meeting notice published at any public location of the Town Hall that is accessible 24/7. The response would be, the agenda was posted in the front door of the Town Hall on 8/26/2021. Also, violation he stated was, the meeting notice was not uploaded to the Town Website, the Board of Selectmen calender to 8/28, at 8:49 AM. The meeting was, was able to be posted on 8/28/2021 when the Town server issues were resolved, and it was allowed to be posted for convenience to the town. Neither of these meet the requirements of the public meeting law. All requirements for open meeting law agenda posted were followed. This, our administrative coordinator made the entire Board aware of the issue on Friday, 8/27, at 12:35 PM via email, and it was acknowledged by several Board members. Members were notified. They responded to resident complaint, claims, and did not verify with the administrative coordinator that all open meeting laws were followed. 9:40 CMR Code of Massachusetts Regulations 29.03, Section 2 lays out the specific requirements for posting meeting notices and agendas. The Board violated the law by holding the meeting on 8/30/21. No violations of Chapter 90, Code of Massachusetts Regulations 2903, Section 2 were violated. The Town post to the website is a convenience to the residents, but the official posting location of the town, verified by the Town Clerk, is the Clerk's Board within the Town Hall. And to post in a 24/7 visible location, front door, the Town, the Town cannot accept the website as its official posting location due to the possibility of power outages, server connections, and so forth. If the Town was to adopt the website as its, as its official posting site, every power outage, server interruption will force all posted meetings to be canceled and rescheduled. The Town is currently looking into installing a meeting board outside of Hall entrance and will require the Board of Selectmen vote to purchase, install, and allow the use of it. The Town never accepted the Town Website as the official posting, so we'll file that with the, in response to the open meeting law violation.
Could we have copies of that, please?
Sure, if we get somebody to.
I'll do it.
Mike, can you run that copy machine for us, please?
Why, Mike? Good lucky day, Mike.
Mike, put yourself in for a couple extra hours of, thank you.
Or just a stipend.
Give you a promotion.
All right, so we'll get a, everybody can get a copy of that.
So where does that go to now? What do you do with that?
What's that?
What do you do with that document?
I'm going to file it with the, as required by law, and somewhere, somewhere here I have that paperwork, but I got a lot of stuff.
Okay, so we just have to mail?
I'll take care of that and file that, and we'll, we'll take care of that. I don't know, I don't think that really needs a vote. We, we set up the response and we'll follow up on it.
Well, it is from the Board, right?
What's that?
This is the Board's response, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so we should look at it.
All right, well, if you want to vote on it, we can vote on it.
Discuss, Mr. Chair?
What's that? Go ahead, Dan.
Can we discuss?
Sure. Go ahead.
There's no statute or a regulation that requires an electronic posting, is that correct?
And as duly noted on that, that if you post it, soon as I get that back, I'll read that out.
Is it a matter of convenience, or do we have to? I, I don't think we have to.
You mean, electronic?
On the website, is that a mandatory?
Well, that's, that's the thing, that.
Mike.
The Town cannot accept the website as its official posting location due to the possibility of power outages, server connections, and so forth. If the Town were to adopt the website as its official posting site, every power outage, server interruption will force all meetings to be canceled and rescheduled. The Town is currently looking into installing a meeting board, no, board outside of the Town Hall entrance and will require the Selectmen vote to purchase, install, and allow the use of it. So, no.
So if I'm hearing this right, we need an official location so people know where to look?
No, we got it. We got, it's.
The Cork Board in the hallway.
That, across from the Town Clerk's office. It's not accessible 24 hours a day. We, we do use the police station and, and the front door to the Town Hall.
So we put it in two places?
Yeah, we had it in.
And we're only required one?
Well, we didn't have it at the police station, but going forward, we will do that.
Jason, did you say we're required two?
The 24/7 and then the regular posting.
Yes, 24/7.
Regular posting outside here, and then somebody has to be able to access it 24 hours a day.
So they used to keep a notebook in.
Well, the front, front door and the window is 24 hours.
It is, it is.
So it doesn't seem like we're in violation?
No, we're not.
Well, if I could.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. I think in the past, they used to keep a notebook to comply with that at the dispatch station, because I, I can foresee the difficulty with taping the multitude of notices to the front door, to the glass of the front door. What if somebody removes one? Who's going to know? Right? What if somebody comes up and takes it down? Right? Do you understand what I'm saying? At least the Clerk's Board in here is, you know, a somewhat secure location for postings, because it's not just us, it's everybody else that's posting. We're, we're not going to be able to tape all of those agendas to the front door. It will look like chaos.
That's why I asked the administrative coordinator to post it at the police station like it used to be.
Right, in a notebook, right? They used to keep a notebook on the table.
Well, I don't know about that.
I thought it was a notebook on the table, and you could just flip through it and see whether people had posted meetings. I mean, if you were that eager to see it, you could.
Yeah, that's going to be done.
Okay, that's fine. I, because I think the idea of, I can just imagine what the front door will look like.
No, there's no violation, Dan.
If you start taping up all the postings.
Let's say who filed the complaint, or we're not privy?
Well, I, I don't have it in my paperwork here, so I, and I don't remember who it was.
Yeah, I'm just curious. How could we make them happy? Did they say, did they want us to redo something? I mean, even though we might not have to, I mean, it's just, what do they want?
Well, he filed, the individual filed a, an open meeting law violation in, with the state, and the Town Clerk, and we will, we'll send this paperwork in.
May I ask?
So apparently, they thought it had to be posted on the web, or where.
Yeah, exactly.
We committed an infraction.
Exactly.
And legally, that's false.
Exactly. Go ahead, Kathy.
I just, I noticed that it says it was on the Clerk's Board, so the Clerk should be able to send, send a statement with this, the Town Clerk. If it was on the Clerk's Board, that's Thursday, 8/26. Is that what we're saying?
Correct, and.
Yeah, if it was on before noon, then it should have a timestamp. I would think we would want to include that.
Well, that's how we got this.
But I mean, I would include that as, as the evidence, you know.
Exactly, that, which has all been met.
That what?
That we did, that it was done, if it was.
Posted on the board out here?
Yeah, 8/26, that's, that's Thursday, so was it?
That's not accessible 24/7.
No, it's not, but.
But the, the front door is.
And that's the requirement.
The front door is acceptable, and.
Police station.
The Town post, post of the webpage is a convenience to the residents, but the official posting location of the town, verified by the Town Clerk, is the Clerk's Board within the Town Hall. And to post in a 24/7 location, front door, and it'll follow up with the.
So there's.
Posted under the police station.
Okay, so there is a law still in play that was 24/7. All the other towns are managing to do this? I'm just curious how all the other.
I didn't say that.
I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I would just wonder how the other towns are doing. I mean, it's, we could just put all the notices in the notebook at the police station, but it's going to be one big fat binder, I guess.
Well, we'll file this paperwork and see where it goes from there.
Okay.
But it seems like everything is covered. Next up is the Bagnell School Capitol Plan.
Looks like this chart.
I think we got the paperwork.
First piece of paper I found tonight. That's it.
All right. Kathy, go ahead. I knew you were working on this.
Well, actually, Rebecca, I think, has been working on it more. I, I think I was just concerned about it, but I think, I mean, obviously, our insurance is covering that floor flooding, right? So that's great news.
Yeah, Rebecca, can you hold on just a second?
Goodness.
You respond to, Jason is, Jim Day on?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Jim, can you speak up a little bit?
Yep, can you hear me okay right now?
Sure.
Yep.
Uh, thank you for, thank you for holding on.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem.
Jim, you want to start off with, or do you want Rebecca to lead off?
Well, for this section, I think, I know you have on the agenda the Bagnell School challenges as well, but this, it sounds like this topic is just talking about the capital improvement plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yep, so, on the plan, you know, I, I gave a copy of it to Rebecca, and that's something that Mr. Greg Hadden and our facilities director, Bob Danforth, have worked and put together over the years of looking out for Bagnell School, what we've talked about over the couple of weeks, of making sure that we're keeping up on some of those improvements. So you will see on the capital improvement, things about the flooring that need to be done, and I think we talked in the past about that 75,000 to 100,000 that the Town was kind of putting aside every. that the town was kind of putting aside every year to help with that. But then I think Rebecca had mentioned to me that you may have gotten your packets, some ideas that Rebecca and I had talked about, which probably goes to the Bagnell challenges, which will relate with the capital improvement plan of some of those needs and how we can go about those things. But I'm happy to take any questions about the capital improvement plan if anyone has any.
Any questions for Jim Day?
Can I ask if we can combine these challenges? It's all Bagnell and we have Mr. Day on the phone.
Jim, are you prepared to do that? Combine the capital plan with the Bagnell School challenges?
Sure, I can talk or answer anything you'd like.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, so it sounds like you... the flooding, the insurance is going to take care of that, which is a good thing?
So as of right now, the insurance company, Inspector Dig come in and look at everything, and Mr. Danforth came in and took all the samples necessary that they needed. There's one thing we wanted to make sure of is that, yeah, water got under the tile, but we also wanted to make sure, you know, did water get into the walls before we just, you know, say everything is done and we fix the flooring? So I haven't heard the latest on the insurance company's decision with that, but I think that was the room we were gonna go... we were looking to go for, and he did get those samples for them.
Do you know what the quote was at this point for the repairs?
At the top of my head, I think for that room, the quote that was given to the insurance company was somewhere in the $11,000 range.
That's all, to take care of the asbestos tiles?
In that room, for the insurance company.
Okay.
And that's an abatement as well, abatement and through the flooring.
Just $11,000.
I think the critical piece, if I don't mind just mentioning... since we're talking about some of the challenges, and I think, as I said, Rebecca and I had talked... you know, one of the critical pieces here is some of the quotes that we've been given are really good through the end of this year. And we're lucky enough this year to have a Christmas break, then a February break, April vacation, and then school gets out early this year, gets out June 10th because of the middle school, high school construction. So what I'm looking at, and I talked to Rebecca about this, is that if there was a way to have a special town meeting with the money, the $75,000 that was not set aside for us this year, if we were able to get that, we would be able to use some of those vacation times to get some of those projects done that... because what I don't want to do is I don't want to affect your summer program that is so wonderful and that hallway, I think two Selectmen walked it with me outside the small gym that needs some significant repairs. And if we wait and do those repairs in the summer, that's gonna shut down a large portion of summer program to do that, where we may have some opportunities during some school vacation time to get that done before the next fiscal year of July 1st.
Anything else, Kathy?
Yeah, well, just, you know, kind of combining all. I know there's another sheet, too. I know you spoke about the work that the highway department has done out behind the Bagnell School, which I certainly noticed was very beautiful. And then you... number three, it says no funds needed, remaining balance from allocation from 2022. So you're assuming, like in the fall, that we can do our $75,000 allocation and then at the annual, we do another, and because of that, you would have a remainder for this other $14,000. So you'd be set.
Yes.
We'd be caught up at that point. And then I also see that they should mention that the wood chips were donated by Dunn Landscaping, maintained and landscaped the back of the field near the fence, so that donation we should acknowledge as a...
Again, I will... I'd like to acknowledge again, I mean, I think we talked about this last couple of weeks and when we had the visit and the tour at the Bagnell. Just an extremely great collaboration with groups, whether it's Dunn Landscaping, the highway department. Rebecca has been fantastic. Catherine's been fantastic, just working together to get some of these projects done. And we've seen, you know, what's been done with the playground in the back of the Bagnell and then how nice the field and the mulching looks. And I just think, you know, we have an opportunity to keep doing that and keeping the school... those issues of the tile floor and number three on your list with the HVAC system, and just being able to keep those things at the par to really make a significant impact on the building.
Yes, I agree, and this looks like a really well put together plan and also with the storage container that Rebecca, I know, worked on that to get that through the CARES funding. That solves your problem of storage space completely at this point? You'll be all set?
Yep, so by Sunday, we will have our small gym area cleaned out.
That's great.
So our youth leagues, summer camp next summer, all of that will be ready to go with that. So again, another thank you to all of them in making that work. And the summer camp, their stuff is in the basement and secured from the weather. So we've just all been able to work together to get those things done.
Great, and I mean, I can't get over how amazing the back of that school looks right now compared to, you know, 25 years ago when it was just a dirt... a dirt patch, really. And the new playground, I encourage the other members of the Board to see that... boy, that surface, you could fall down on that. It's not gonna hurt. It's really, really something else. It's great. It looks amazing, really beautiful. So as far as what caused the flooding, I think Selectmen Naves kind of pointed... said this thing that everybody agreed to, that somehow those drains clogged outside that room, is what we're saying, right? The drainage in the parking lot must have clogged? So is that because the school was empty and it's just the summer program is there? So no one was really looking at that? Is that something... I certainly wouldn't want to flood the school again after we fix it.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer to that is. I think one thing, and we may have talked about it when we did the tour, is that communication that is just needed between... which is what I'm trying to do for us from the school point of view with the town of who's responsible for what. I think, you know, there's the maintenance on the outside, you know, and yes, the town owns the building and the land. And so sometimes there's that communication, I think, of, okay, well, who's keeping their eye on those things? And sometimes I've noticed over time that there's the communication of, is it the facilities department looking at those manuals? Is it the highway department looking at those things? And that's what I'm trying to work on, is to make sure that we are just all communicating and all on the same page so we can look at those issues.
Okay, well, that sounds good. And about the other problem, you said about the courtyard with the... I forget what kind of bugs it was. Do you remember?
I lost.
Well, I don't know. The courtyard, you had a problem with something infesting into the school building from that middle courtyard?
Yep, so that's something that I'm going to take care of out of a budget that we have with the school, so...
Okay.
I have a landscape company who is gonna come in and is gonna clean out both courtyards, and I think hopefully, we will get a chance to. I know a while ago Rebecca and I had talked about some wood decking that is in one of the courtyards that maybe the highway department with possibly Dunn Landscaping would be able to take out, because what's happened is it's become so overgrown and this wood decking that was put in decades ago, termites have now infested it. And so what's happening is those termites are underground, making their nest, and the termites are getting into some of the rooms and their nest... you ever seen a termite nest when it explodes? It's quite a sight, especially when the kids are all in the room.
Oh, (laughing) no, thank you. That sounds good. I'm glad you're handling that. My only other last concern, and I don't know that you had any say in it, was that they moved the IT administrative offices into the Bagnell at a time when, you know, we have some rooms closed down, obviously, from the flooding and this and that. And I wanted to just check and make sure you do have enough classrooms for this coming school year.
So right now, we are perfectly fine. I've been able to create... I think I showed you some of the rooms that I put carpet, some temporary carpet in.
Yes.
The thing that is really going to help us going forward for room space is clearing out that small gym, is gonna open up for some extracurricular activities at the school, like music lessons, and also getting the abatement done on the flooded room and especially a room in the back hallway that's tile head cracked. Those two rooms get abated and tile gets down is gonna help us significantly.
Okay, well, good. Well, I'm just sorry you lost that space to the IT department. That's a nice... that was a nice space for the science and engineering math classroom. That's all. We'll get it back eventually?
Two years. Once the new building goes up, you know, around that time, we will get it back. And, you know, Central Office needed a place to go. They're also using Merrimack Schools for another place while the construction is being done. So we're all trying to pitch in together again to help out and give that space until this project's done.
Of course. Maybe we could charge them rent. Just kidding. We won't. They'll just charge us on the assessment. All right, I'm done.
Anybody else's questions for Jim Day or Rebecca?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Dan, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Day.
Evening, Mr. McDonald.
How are you? So just for the people in town, so is time of the essence on this? It seems to me that if you don't get the funds appropriated at a special town meeting, this will have to wait. Is that true?
Yeah, so if it does not, it would have to wait until... I guess my whole thought process in this was get these rooms done, especially since some quotes have already come in and are good. And if we were to get the $75,000 to be able to do those rooms, we have plenty of breaks in the year to set up a time to do it, and then hopefully at an April town meeting, have another keep on this route of another $75,000 for the July 1st, where we can then be able to do some other projects and really get most of the tile done.
So there appears to be no other legal mechanism to pay for it, get it done through the regional school district or otherwise? Is that correct? The only way to get this done is to have funds appropriated from special town meeting? I guess, you know? Have you run it by the school district, I guess, the issue with the maintenance?
You still here, Jim?
Some of that. Was that to me about another way to get funds to do it?
Yeah, or is there a way the school district can pull this off somehow, some way, and then we'll reimburse them later? I just... for us to have a special town meeting, my concern is that we had a tough time getting 100 people at the regular town.
So my understanding and maybe...
You know, so I don't want to fail on that, and then what? So I want to try to, you know, get the task done, get a result.
My understanding, and maybe if Rebecca's there, maybe she knows it as well, but my understanding is that with the regional agreement, that any of these projects, like the classrooms specifically, are over... if they're over $10,000, then it's a town responsibility?
Yes.
If it's under $10,000, then money-wise, it's a district responsibility? Of course, I'm not in charge of any of that, but that's my understanding of how it's worked in the past.
I'm just wondering if the school could foot the bill upfront and then send us the bill later? If that helps us avoid a special town meeting? Is that possible? I don't know.
Mr. McDonald.
I don't know.
We're going to have to have a town meeting, I think. I don't see a way around it because of the...
We have other issues?
The Vintucket assessment.
Yes, or...
Yeah, we have to appropriate another, what, $111,000?
For the school budget.
Else we won't be able to...
All right, if we have to go there anyways.
Right, we won't be able to set our tax rate, I think. I don't see any way around that.
Yeah, I just didn't know if, you know, if... let's just say the pipe breaks or something like that and it's $11,000. I mean, we don't typically get an emergency bill for that, do we? Doesn't it go through the district? You know, I just... I know we paid for the snow removal, but...
Right, we did. We had to do that.
Years ago, but I'm just thinking, is there... I'm trying to find another way to skin the cat. So if we don't ask, we don't know. I just... is there another way? You know, if we have to go to town meeting and then it's a moot point, I guess. We have to vote on other things, but I like to have Plan B. See, I don't want you to have to wait a year to get this done. It shouldn't have to skip for the kids, you know? I mean, if you need the space, you need the space.
I appreciate that. I like the thinking outside the box stuff because I have...
I want a fallback position, so can we ask Greg LeBrack or somebody in the district, is there a mechanism to, you know, have them pay the bill and we reimburse them later? You know?
You give him a call now.
I owe you. Hey, I try, you know?
Salary you want to take that out of?
Oh, I... oh, don't even ask me that question. Mike Tamses.
He's unpaid.
Strike that.
We have an agenda item later on as far as to talk about a town meeting in November.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go there next.
Bill, you had something?
Yeah, I think we have a landlord rentee relationship.
We do.
So what you're asking is almost like asking the tenant to pay for the repairs and the landlord to pay them back. I'm not sure... Greg's a nice guy, but I don't see that happening any time soon.
I don't know. It's a little more money involved. We're in the same boat.
Jim, nice to talk to you, Jim.
As well, Mr. O'Neil.
First of all... Bill, please. First of all, it's great that you guys are working together with Matt Castaway with the summer program, because as you realize, and maybe some folks don't realize, a lot of that improvements in your grounds behind the field were paid for with the funds that the summer program throws off every year. They are literally almost a cash cow for this town. So it's great that you're working together because we need to keep that program going because the cash it generates helps with the building. Second of all, I know we've been working on rooms in that school for a little while. Can you... do you know off the top of your head how many rooms we have done since we started this remediation for the asbestos tiles?
I don't have a definite number, but it's over 10. I walked around the school the other day, just kind of looking at them. So over 10 rooms have been done, and I think when looking at them and just trying to make a list of them, really, I look at... there are two rooms, the two rooms that I've talked about, that definitely need to be done. And when I spoke to Rebecca this week, the projects really the focus on are these two rooms that need to get done and then the hallways. And if the hallways and these two rooms get done, the school is in excellent shape at that point.
Okay. How many more rooms beyond the two that you're talking about need to be done? How many rooms we got left?
Oh, probably no more than five.
Really?
Two of them... two of them are not... two of them are not rooms that have tile. Two of them are strictly because they have carpet, and we kind of want to get rid of the carpet with all the allergens that are out there now and get that out of there. But I would say about five more rooms. There was a room that I was concerned about, but then I had the custodians go in and take up a temporary carpet that was there, and lucky enough, we found out that the tile underneath was perfect. No need to change it at all, so we saved a bundle on that.
Awesome. So we have five to six rooms and then all the hallways, is what you're saying?
Yep. Yep, and we'd be in very good shape at that point.
As opposed to doing this piecemeal, has anybody thought about the idea of approaching the contractor with the whole nut and saying, can we save a significant amount of money if we can do it like all at once over a summer?
That, that's a terrific question. It, uh, I mentioned it to Rebecca that when we started this, I wanna say, you know, two, maybe three years ago, um, after starting it, uh, we did a, uh, we did get a number, and it was well over the, I may have it off by a couple thousand, but it was well over the 200,000 to do the whole building, maybe 250 or more, um, to do the whole building. Mr. Danforth and Mr. Haddon had gotten a quote, um, to, it was just, it was too much at that time. And one of the other concerns we had is what I was saying earlier with one of the hallways, is it, it would shut down the building really for a whole summer, 'cause when they abate the rooms, they have to seal off the rooms for the abatement. So, when they do the hallways, I'm assuming they pretty much have to seal off the building to do the hallways, and that's gonna affect in the summer, the summer camp.
Yeah, you can see that being a real issue, right?
It was one hallway that I was really looking at saying, oh, it'd be great if we had this money and could do it during one of our school vacation weeks, 'cause we just shut down the school during that week, summer camp can still go, and we do a hallway in another section of the building if they can shut it down reasonably while summer camp runs. That, that's what I didn't want to affect is summer camp.
Is it something that could be done over the winter break? Because that's your longest break of the year, besides summer.
So, it could, it could be. I'd have to talk with the flooring company. When they do a classroom, it takes them just to do a classroom. To abate the room, it takes them about two or three days, and then they tile the room in probably a day and a half. So, I estimate, you know, about a week, about the five day, five, you know, school days that you would have, they do one classroom. Um, and then, of course, right when the tile goes down, the floors have to get waxed, um, by the custodian. So, a full week and a classroom is usually ready by that point. So, the hallways would take a significant amount of time.
Yeah, to, to shut down the school and, and shut down the summer program would be extremely detrimental to a, a significant number of families, not to mention, uh, the revenues that that summer program generates. So, we really need to figure out a way that that doesn't happen and, and, and your, and your work gets done.
That's why I'm looking at the Christmas break, the February break, the April break, and then by us getting out of school earlier in June, we actually have two weeks in June before summer camp starts. So, there's the potential of five full weeks in this fiscal year that we could get a lot of that stuff done, um, potentially. As I said to Rebecca, it, a lot of that's gonna depend on what the schedules are for the flooring companies, too. It looks great for me to just say, oh, let's just do it those weeks, but I have no idea what their schedules are either until, you know, we get a vote, we have the money, and they're able to set it up.
Right, and labor is a real issue right now, so are the increasing costs of materials. Okay, great. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate all the answers.
You want to follow up, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, to Bill's point here, um, Mr. Day, would it be, I mean, would it be worthwhile to get that, um, get a quote and see if they could pull it off on those, uh, Christmas, February and April vacation, and then if you get a price on that, maybe we go to special town meeting with that, if it's feasible. I mean, it's, it's worth asking.
Yeah, we could do that. See if they, I could ask and see if they can give us a quote for the whole project, too, the hallways.
Only if we can save a significant amount of money by doing it.
I'm with you, you know, but it-
And, and, and labor a- and materials aren't getting any cheaper by the day, right?
If I were gambling, I'd say things are going up.
Yeah.
So-
I'd be, I'd bet with you.
I don't know that's true, but it's-
So, I know that the quotes that we have, uh, for the classrooms that we were hoping to do this summer, I know that those are good. Um, I believe it's till the beginning 2022. So, that's why we were looking at hoping to have some money to do something at the Christmas break, 'cause those quotes were good for a year. They got those quotes back, uh, last January or February. And I think you're absolutely right. If we don't go with those quotes for those rooms, prices of things are gonna go up.
So, um, one thought is, Mr. Day, that the, if we don't appropriate all of the money at the fall town meeting, whatever is appropriated at the April town meeting, I believe, won't, is not available to, for use until July 1st to the new fiscal year. So, you wanna, I think the thought to roll back and get a quote on the whole thing is probably time well spent right now, because I think that if you're really trying to capture those weeks in June, the money would not be available for your use if you, if you put it on to the next annual town meeting warrant.
Well, you know, that's a good point, but I think to Dan's point, if the town appropriated the money to do it, we could probably get the school to front the money, knowing that, knowing that the town has already appropriated the money to do it.
See, now we're working together, Bill.
I, I just think that we should appro-
At that point, it's a shell game, you know what I mean?
It is. It's just waiting.
Left pocket, right pocket.
We're on the contract.
Yeah.
Well, you, you can go make your pitch to the school, but I think we should, might as well just to get the money put aside, so we know we have it.
Day, we want the school nice for the kids and healthy and-
Of course.
Get rid of the-
Well, we have them-
Get the lead out, get the asbestos out, get the, you know, just open up the classrooms. You need more space.
Correct, but this would just be that when the fiscal 22 warrant comes up, we don't put the 75,000 on that. You're taking the money from the same place.
Yeah.
So, you're just taking it all at the fall town meeting. And that way-
Yeah.
And then we got this.
Are we all set with Jim?
You asked a question, Kathy, right? You know an immediate answer, right?
So, listen, Day, we can get both quotes, run on two tracks, Plan B.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, so, I mean, one of the other things I can get-
Piecemeal and all at once.
I can get the quote for everything, but the other thing is for you, all to think about is, if you just wanted to focus on for the special town meeting, the 75,000 that, you know, we had hoped to get this summer, that 75,000 would be able to, because if the chur, insurance company does that room, then that 75,000 would enable me to do at Christmas break, the other room that needs to be done, and the hallway that summer camp uses during the school year. So, then summer camp wouldn't be affected, and then in the next fiscal year, we could finish off the rest of it. That's just another option.
I like options.
Okay, Rebecca, did you wanna weigh in? You're all set. Thank you.
And you provided excellent work.
Uh, we all set with, with Jim?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Uh, Jim, thank you very much for, uh, waiting around, and, uh, it was some valuable information.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all for your support. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Okay, um, we'll go back to 46 Washington Street Historical Designation.
I don't think it needs to be on the agenda. I think we know it's a historical building, right?
Yeah, we were hoping we'd get a letter, uh, but we haven't got one yet, but we do know that it's a historic building. I spoke with the, uh, uh, Historical Society, and I, I, I talked to Mike Dempsey, uh, and they, they both mentioned the fact that it is a historic building. Dan?
What's a historic building? Anything old?
You know-
I mean, I'm sorry, I don't wanna be facetious already that I don't know. What's a historic building?
It's gotta be a little older than you, but maybe Mike can weigh in on that. Mike, can you help us out with that?
As long as the historic commission votes it, then it's a historic building, because the other option is to go through the federal process, but that costs a lot of money.
So, it's not on the historic register?
Right.
It doesn't have to be.
No.
And if we, if the historic board votes on it or says it is, then it's eligible for CPA funds. I wanna connect the dots on this, 'cause I see the money coming.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, and just, if, if it needs a ton of money, I wanna make sure it comes out of the right pot.
Well, it's, uh, it's part of the history of the town, and when I spoke with Claire Walsh, and she, uh, said it is a historic building, uh, part of the history of the town. Uh, so, it would be, it would be available for funds.
CPA funds.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, next, uh, article to the State House for Finance Director repeal. I don't think we got anything back on that yet.
No, it, uh, Mr. DeMore did communicate with me that he had communicated to you that we wouldn't have this article until after we hired the TA.
Yep, he did.
So, we can remove that, um, respectfully, so that we don't need to talk about that.
Okay, um, we, we'll, we don't think we even need to vote the table out. I think we can just bring that up, uh, later. The ESS, uh, School District Funds, I know Kathy, you were working on that?
Yes, so, um, I have researched the, the number that they use for evaluation, and it is a made-up number. It's fictitious. They've made an estimate, and it's much higher than our prior year valuation, um, as is Merrimack's, I think, as well. So, I've been in contact with the, um, Town Administrator at Merrimack. I'm gonna do a little more work on these numbers, and then, um, she's, she's, um, offered that we could have a sit-down, a meeting, and go over some things. We might have some, we might have common ground with Merrimack on this issue, is my thought. Um, this number, this valuation being that much higher than the prior year is a big deal, uh, creates a, quite a swing. Um, and this is why their formula does not work for a regional school district, because the whole formula is based on a standalone school district gets allocated a foundation budget, based on the amount of students, the needs, blah, 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 blah. And then they look at the wealth of the community, and they decide how much aid they're going to give that district, right? So, if it's a standalone district, it's great, because you get the aid, and then you pay your required contribution with the aid removed, right? But, when you do it to a regional school district, the regional school district takes that whole bundle of aid right off the top of the assessment, and then looks at allocating the foundation budget. So, what if Groveland was a major component of that allocation of Chapter 70 aid? We don't see that.
We don't?
No, no. The allocation of the foundation, the minimum required, is based on our valuation and our, our aggregate valuation, not even per, not even per capita, and our aggregate income, not even per capita. Those are the numbers they're using, and that, that valuation number just looks so high. I just, I went down to our assessor's office and said, where did this come from? Do you have this number? She said, no, it's, it's an estimate. So, I'm chasing it down more.
And that report left, it has X where the pupils are, right? It doesn't have a, a number of pupils, doesn't it, on the report?
Well, when they do the, the foundation budget for the whole school district, yes, they have numbers of students and numbers of low-income students. They do it for the district.
But that report broke it down. I apologize, I left it out in my car, but there's a X where the pupils are on the allocation. I was wondering, well, why didn't they fill in the numbers?
Oh, you mean from the school when they do our assessment?
Yeah, why didn't they fill in that field?
Because they're using the state's number. They're giving, they assign us that minimum required contribution is determined by the state and does not take into account-
So, that column there is basically, it's, it's blank for a reason.
Correct.
It wasn't, it wasn't used in the allocation, period.
Right, or it's, it's, I think you're referring to the Penn Tucket Assessment.
Yes.
Yeah, so it would be-
But I'm like, why wasn't it allocated based on pupil?
Because the state is assigning us a minimum required contribution based on an estimated valuation of our town. And that valuation looks, right now, I've gotta compare it to the prior year's actual.
Yeah.
It looks significantly higher.
But then you apply a factor, whatever, 38% or something, and then-
That doesn't happen till afterwards. So, for the operating budget, the first step of it is, whatever the state makes up, and I'm saying makes up because it is based on a made-up number, they assign us a minimum required contribution of the foundation, boom, that's done.
And we can't control that.
We don't seem to be able to, obviously.
So, so I'm trying to narrow in, where does the estimate come in? Over there in the district office?
Oh, okay, so for them to-
Who's making the estimate? Not the state.
The state, yes. The, the Department of Education has a, has a whole website where they show step-by-step the calculation of your minimum required, and they are developing a wealth factor and a percentage relationship between this valuation and income in aggregate. And that's, and then they have these crazy rules, like, well, take the lesser of, 75% of this or 82% of that. I'm, I'm tracing these numbers across a spreadsheet. These are rules that they made up.
But it appears-
Yes.
Because there's such a big deviation from the prior years-
Yes.
That they, maybe in a prior year with the lesser of, and this year, they're going with the greater of. So, something shifted, and we don't know what the shift is.
Well, I believe they said they changed their formula. Right, I know. Why not? Let's change it. And, and as I said, for a sta-
We like the old one better.
Right, for the standalone school district, maybe this is working like a standalone city, because they get more aid-
Yeah.
And they can meet their minimum. But for a regional school district, the aid goes right to the school. So, if, let's say Groveland's bringing in 40% of the aid, right, 'cause of our income, special needs, whatever, that doesn't get allocated against our assessment at all. The aid goes to the Penn Tucket region. They chop it right off the top.
Is there a timeline to appeal that decision?
I'm not even gonna look at that, because I wanna make sure we have, I think we have grounds to make a pretty good statement, but I wanna make sure of it.
Just wanna make sure we don't blow a deadline. Is there, you know, is it-
I haven't looked for one. I really, I haven't had time to. I mean, I've been chasing it down as I could, you know? It's, it's, they give you just enough information to kinda get an idea of how they do it, but you can't tie it out specifically. That one number, I thought, was an actual valuation in our town, and it's not.
Did the legislature change the formula, or was the Department of Education?
This Department of Education does this. But their slideshow says they're using our Department of Revenue numbers, and now I'm finding out they're not. They're using estimates.
So, we're not rich, are they? Just think we are?
Well, I have a problem with aggregate valuation being used as opposed to per capita, right? You can have this much value of land, but if you have more people, you're less wealthy, right?
Maybe, yeah.
Well, yes. You know, the valuation of another town could be less than ours, but if they have a smaller population, those are wealthier people. They own bigger pieces of land. They're more wealthy, per capita.
If they're just looking at the total, then the population-
They are looking at the total, the aggregates. They're not looking at per capita, and, and that, I think, is a big mistake, because-
It's a huge mistake.
Per capita is how you pay taxes. It's per capita, per-
For a household.
Correct, yeah, I know. Yep.
Okay.
So, I'm, I-
So, you, you gonna have a report back for us at the next meeting?
I hope so. I think I've gotten enough now, and I want, I do wanna meet with, um, Merrimack's, uh, business manager and see what she has to say. See if we can get two towns out of the three saying the same thing, because I think then we'd have a better shot at, at the challenge.
Okay. All right, so that sounds like we're moving forward on that.
Yes.
Uh, next order of business, pumpkin festival. Uh, we discussed that. We, uh, the last meeting that we were go, would go for that. Uh, and Catherine, you still on?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Uh, we're up to a discussion on the pumpkin festival. Uh, have, have you got any response from that?
Um, no, I'm still waiting on a quote for the staging, since we can't move the, um, bleachers.
Okay.
And I also found an old file that more, I believe must have belonged to Denise, and it, um, it had some, um, uh, contracts in there for entertainment. So, I was trying to see if I could get some quotes to present to the board next week as well for perhaps DJ.
Okay, all right. And, uh, I was gonna reach out to, uh, one of the former members of the committee, and as yet, I haven't been able to get ahold of her, and I'll continue to work on that. Uh, thank you. Uh, next is the COVID-19 tracking for Groveland. We got the, uh, the graph.
The bar chart, yep.
And, um-
So, I just wondered if we wanted to start maybe putting, like, keep, instead of writing all those words on the town sign, put like two or three bars, like a rolling, well, as we go forward, just keep carrying the three months. Hopefully, hopefully the rate continues to go up. Um, and I, I was concerned about this new, um, statement from our president about if you have more than 100 employees, um, that you would have to start mandatory testing, right? So, I thought that, I don't know exactly. I know we're a small town. I know we don't have large departments. But how many overall employees do we have? Do we know?
Well, are, are you including teachers?
No, 'cause they would be the Penn Tuckets problem. So, they're over 100.
They're over 100.
They're doing what my, my school is asking us to turn in our cards, cards right now. So, they'll, they're getting set.
I don't think we have anything close to that.
I don't know. There's, when you add up the police department, the reserves, the dispatchers, the, do you count the on- the on-call firefighters? If you have to count the on-call firefighters, you've got 100, maybe.
Well, let's see if we can't get a, a count for the next meeting. We'll talk to the department heads and, actually, we've just run.
Payroll.
Payroll.
Right, yep, no. Count the payroll.
We'll work on that.
Yes, yes, because I just, I haven't particularly read this new ruling thing, but it sounds like, it sounds like everybody who might have 100 or more employees is getting ready to try and not have to be testing people twice a week, I think it is.
I think it was weekly.
I heard twice a week. I don't know.
Weekly.
Is it weekly or twice? I don't, either way, it's expensive if you have to do that.
I think it was weekly.
Still expensive for an employer to have to do that.
And, and I did speak with the Board of Health and the question came up about running a COVID clinic with them. They don't have access to any vaccines. And they, I didn't speak with the Council on Aging Directive, but I know she had looked into it with same result. So they, I've been told that CVS or Walgreen, that the state hasn't supplied any vaccines to be given out by Council on Aging or the Board of Health.
Can I speak to that as well?
Sure.
Uh, thank, thanks to our, again, a great partnership that we're starting to develop in one of our great neighbors, A.W. Chesterton. They will be holding another free vaccine clinic on September 23rd.
Nice.
From 10 to noon at Building B in the lobby. They're going to be offering either the Pfizer or the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. This is absolutely free to anyone and everyone that wants to show up. So I'd like permission to get that on our signboard if we could, to promote that as heavily as possible so we can increase our numbers and get to that 80% district-wide number that we really need to get to so that the kids can go to school without their stinking masks on.
What, what is the time on the September 23rd?
It is 10 to 12, Building B, in the lobby of Building B.
Well, we'll see if we can, I'll talk to Catherine, see if there's room on the sign for that. I know it's pretty full out there.
Well, you can take down the COVID vaccination rate to get this up if you want for a week. I mean, this is important.
Yep.
And can we do the phone call for this? You know the code red?
A robocall?
Yeah, why not? We haven't been abusing that too much.
I, I have no problem getting this information out any and every way possible. Again, you know, my kid's going to school and having to wear a mask every day and until we can get to 80%, that's not going to change. So anything that I, and everything I can do to get that mask off his face.
Well, we'll, we'll find out about that. Catherine, can you help us out with that?
Sure can.
The, the reverse 911.
Yep, I will get that going. Yeah, I can get that, that done this week, yep.
All right, thank you very much.
And could you please forward me that email with the information for Chesterton so I can also upload it to the website?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next to order of business, identifying line, item numbers for extra stipends and hours. We checked with the town accountant and we got that information. The current stipends being paid and accounts that are being charged to do are as follows. Ellen Petullo, the accountant, $200 per week being charged to the town administrator salary line. Rebecca Alderman, $100 per week being charged to the town administrator salary line. Catherine Warden, $300 per week being charged to the town administrator salary line. Nisha Burke, $250 per week charged to the Council on Aging Outreach Wage Line.
So is this up for discussion now?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so I've been doing research and looking into this and I think that we tried to do something in, for a good reason and we may have made some mistakes here in doing this. First of all, when we started out with the stipends, and this is predates when you were on the board, Dan, but we actually had somewhat of a cost basis for the initial stipends that were for the assistant treasurer and the accountant. We had specific duties, cost basis, certain amount of money, and then once we hired the interim financial director, all of the stipends were supposed to stop. That was voted by this board and that evidently didn't happen. And then I think as this year began, I was, I was rather surprised by people coming in and, and asking for the stipend because as I thought about it more, here, here's the difficulty I have with it. If you annualize, just say, the administrative coordinator's stipend on an annualized basis, that's paying that position almost $60,000 a year. This was brought to my attention by a resident who has a background in human resources and I thought, wow, that's really out of, out of alignment with the intention of the stipends. And I know that the outreach worker was supposed to end when we hired the new Council on Aging Director. So I don't understand why these stipends keep rolling and rolling and rolling. I would think that if there's additional work between Ellen and Rebecca, that's specifically the CARES Act, you can charge those hours to the CARES Act because other hours, other towns are doing that. But I also look at it and say, well, this stuff is here to stay. It's becoming part of their job. I don't think the hiring of the town administrator is going to change the fact that the accountant has to account for the CARES Act money and Rebecca is constantly working on it and new projects. So I would like to do away with the stipends before we drain this town administrator salary any further. We, we're in a position now, we're going to start negotiating with somebody. I want the most amount of salary available so we can attract a good candidate. Our overall salary is not too low, but it's on the low end of what other towns are paying for a town administrator. So we are going to have to be in a negotiation and I think it's time to, to speak to the employees and tell them that we need to change this. And if you're not going to change this, then I think I will not be comfortable signing payroll until we get a ruling from the Department of Revenue on voting something like this that has not gone through town meeting because it's going to add up to, to money by the end of the year. It's going to add up to a lot. You can't keep charging it to the TA salary once we hire the TA. So we're at the end of this.
Well.
We are at the end of this. We're at the natural end of this anyway, right?
The, as, as you remember.
Yes.
The stipends were added to the different positions for jobs that were taken on in the absence of the finance director. These Ellen, Rebecca, Catherine, they took on additional duties in the absence of the finance director. When, when the town administrator comes on board, most of those should, should end. And as far as the salaries, the, we have a yearly salary that we voted at the town meeting for the town administrator and we're, we're now into, into the fiscal year, so there should still be, I think we, we set aside, if I'm not mistaken, $120,000 to pay a town administrator. That was the top salary for the year. So if you prorate the salary after we hire them, certainly won't be $120,000 that we had budgeted. So there's money in that, in that line item for, for the stipends on positions that they took on after we got a, a finance director left. Somebody had to do these. Town accountant, the Rebecca, the, in her office, the town planner, and Catherine took on additional duties that were being done by the finance director. So when he left, somebody had to do them and they took them on. And there should be plenty of money left. If you want, for the next meeting, we can get a, we can get an update from the town accountant on what's left in that line item.
Let, let me just be clear what I'm saying because I, I think you're, you're missing, maybe missing my point. I want to make it really blunt. I think that this is not legal, what we're doing. First of all, the finance director's duties, as far as what's, what's going on, the higher order work, we're doing most of that. I mean, Bill O'Neill and Mike Wood negotiated the police contract, Jason and I are doing the other two unions, Dan and I are looking at treasurers, I mean, I could go on and on and on. I'm looking at the S F firms. We're not doing everything quickly. Once we get a TA, I'm sure this ship will run more smoothly than it is right now, but we are, we're that rest. The responsibility rests there. We can't be here every day, so I don't really have as big a problem with extra daytime hours when the town hall is open. But I do have a problem with paying just a sum of money that came from nowhere. It's not based on any cost basis. It's not based on any additional hours of work. It's just, here, have some more money because we have an empty salary that we can take it from. That's not okay. I think, if you feel it's okay, please get a ruling from the Department of Revenue because these, this stipend, especially at the $300 a week, is just so out of alignment with that salary. It's just, it's, you're giving away the shop here and the taxpayers' dollars are hard earned.
Well, where were you when you come up with this?
I'm not done yet. I'm saying, I take responsibility for my errors. I said that at the beginning. I think we've made an error here and I think we need to turn it around. The TA is coming on board. It's a good time to turn it around. The Council on Aging Director was hired like a month ago, so why would we still be paying a stipend for the additional duties of the director?
Uh, Jason, did you have a response?
I have an answer for the, for that one. And that's because she took on the roles that Maria took, that was doing because Maria has left.
We need to see this informa, I mean, this, this business of rolling stipends, we need to set salaries. Salaries get set at town meeting. That's the money you pay that person for the year. If somebody leaves and you're combining two jobs, we need to hear about it. I didn't, I have no idea about any of this. So I don't want to see stipends. I want to see, I'll pay people for their hours and I'll pay them a fair rate for their hours. But putting a stipend on top of the hours without more hours is just inflating their salary on an annualized basis beyond what the town can afford and, and it's not fair. It's not fair to the other workers that have been here 20-plus years that don't get the stipends and that are getting turned down for additional hours. Board of Health, clerk in the Board of Health had to work tremendous amount of additional hours during the time we were having all the difficulties with trash pickup. As a result of that, she fell behind in other workload that she was trying to do. The Board of Health signed off on her working some additional hours to try and catch up the minutes and other things. That got denied. And the other question I have is, additional hours for any position needs to be charged just to their salary. I don't want other salaries raided when we're trying to hire people. I want to be able to negotiate with these new TA and the new treasurer and not have their salaries bled out before we can even talk to them. We're, we're partway in the year, which means technically we can negotiate a little better than 120 if we have to, to steal a good candidate away. That, I, it's very competitive out there. You heard the consultant, Dan and I have seen that with the treasurer, it's very, very competitive out there. So we've got to stop this.
Jason, go ahead. I did speak with the accountant on that as well and she said that she couldn't, in good conscience, apply the stipend to their line item because then she would know they were going over and that would be improper practices.
See, I disagree. I think you ought to get a re, ruling from the Department of Revenue because you're now applying that stipend to a position that we set aside $120,000 for.
Kathy, with all due respect, you're, you're repeating yourself. Dan, do you want to weigh in?
Mr. Chair, my understanding of the authority of the Board of Selectmen is we can hire and fire. Okay? So, back at town meeting, we voted on a budget, true. There were salary items on there, true. Okay? However, when I was sitting there, I did, I could not foresee, maybe some of you could, but I did not foresee that the interim finance director wouldn't be here at the beginning of the new fiscal year. We are almost three months through it, through this year. By the time, you know, we get a TA, I'm assuming if we make an offer to one of these two candidates or someone else, they're going to give a notice. And if they're in any position of, you know, magnitude, then they're going to give more than two weeks' notice. So I don't foresee that we're going to get that TA in here before November 1st. Don't have a crystal ball, but I'm, want to move it along. We need to fill those positions. I agree with you that the stipend shouldn't be a permanent way of doing business. I agree with you on that. But we're in a pandemic. People are wearing masks, still worried about things. We have two major vacancies in the building. They're at, you know, nucleus of this building, the, what was the finance director, which was the town treasurer also. That job morphed into a TA, which we don't have, and we don't even have a town treasurer. We have a consultant in here, I believe, one day a week. So that's going to be another discussion as to whether or not we can certify cash, buh-buh-buh, meet deadlines. That's, that's coming up. So these people are on overload, expected to do the job of what will be two full-time positions. And, and we are doing more than maybe in the past on this board in terms of, you know, interviewing people, HR, maybe if we had a HR person in house, you and I wouldn't be talking to these people, would use that person to screen them and send them, and percolate up to us. So I think we're stuck and we have a Band-Aid going on right here, but the Band-Aids will come off as soon as we fill the TA and we fill the treasurer. I think that will happen inevitably. I don't think there'll be any argument otherwise.
Kathy, would you let him finish?
So, I don't want to belabor the point, but I think, I understand, I think you're frustrated with it and in terms of accounting, I talked to, you know, Ellen today and, yeah, they, she can't book something and overdraw an account. But is it arguable or is it rational that if someone's doing the function of those two vacant positions, that you can allocate some of those funds? I think that's within the authority of the Board of Selectmen to say, we're going to hire you to do that job. So we're not raiding the, kind of the line item. It's out of necessity if you're doing the job of the finance director or the TA or the, you know, whatever the, the title is. If you're doing someone else's job, why isn't it, you know, reasonable that you would allocate the funds to pay for that function?
Well, let's go back to the town meeting. For the accountant, I think we gave almost a 33% increase. We increased the hours and the rate of pay. We brought her right up to the industry standard. We did good thing there. So now that's a salaried position, right? And here's what I'm looking at. I look at what she's doing, I'm thinking, that's going to stay with that position. The TA is not going to come in here and do the accounting, not going to reconcile the books, not going to close out the year. Okay? That's going to have to get done. I'm just saying that, look at these numbers, especially the $300. I mean, when you annualize that, when you annualize that on the hourly rate, it's absurd what we're paying. I'm saying at least bring it down into something that has a cost basis. Bring it down into something that has a cost basis that you can look at and say, like we did when we first set these up, we said, okay, we had the accountant come in, we said, we're going to need you to take over the budget process and take over the CARES Act, all the initial purchasing and all that stuff. And I can't think of what else, Bill, I don't know if you remember. We, we set aside a specific list of duties under Chairman Wood. Then we had the assistant treasurer come in and we set aside a list of duties that she was going to take up, take up. And we said, okay, this is what you're going to get. I think it was like 250. And they were both set specifically at those amounts for a reason, for these duties. But now, then we brought in now a consultant treasurer who comes in with a team that's picking up some of these duties. So I don't see those same amounts of duties being here. So I don't think these numbers are reasonable or based on any cost. And I think the Council on. And I think the Council on Aging, we've set the salaries, Jason. I, I think unless they're merging two jobs together, you can't keep throwing stipends at everything. This, it's just going to create a lot of problems within our staff because there's other staff members who are working extra hours and doing additional things, they're not getting a stipend. Everybody's going to want a stipend. It's, it's just not a good way to set salaries. I think we made an error here this year, in our starting of this year. We should have sat down with the staff and had a more open discussion and set some cost parameters on this. Keeping these hourly rates in line with the experience level, some of these people have been here one year. Okay? That's all the experience they're bringing to the job. Some people have been here five or more years. That's more experience, more training. Some of them have college degrees and master's degree. That makes them more valuable. You, you can't just start making up numbers and I feel like-
Kathy, you're, you continually repeat yourself.
I'm not going to repeat. I'm going to say one thing. These numbers were brought into our meeting and given to us, like, this is what I want. No analysis, no cost basis. And I think, you know, at the time I thought, okay, I guess, try to go along with this. But now I'm looking at it and this is not okay. I, I feel like we've made a serious error here and I cannot support the continuation of these stipends. You need to come up with a cost basis.
Okay. Uh, Bill, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'm fooling with numbers like I, I love to do. Right now, if what Ellen gave us is the, through the first two months, uh, line, August, that puts us at 16.7% through the year. Right now, the administrative line, we're at 22%. So we're going to overshoot this runway, uh, three months before the end of the year. We're, we're projecting to spend 31, almost $32,000 on the position that town voted for We're eating into both the town administrator line and the, uh, town treasurer collector line and the treasurer collector salary line. We, I, I don't know how you keep eating into these lines and then have the money to pay for these folks once we hire them. The, the, it's simple math, there's, there's just not enough money. But my other question would, would be, or comment would be, um, I guess, where's the heavy lifting? I, I, I know that we're working more hours. I get it. We paying for those extra hours. I get it. What I don't get is, is where's the heavy lifting in those hours? As Kathy said, you know, uh, Mike and I took care of the police contract. She and Jason are doing the water and sewer and, and highway. Collectively, we all did the waste management contract. Rebecca's taking care of, Rebecca Oldham is taking care of the Council on Aging, the procurement. So where's the heavy lifting that justifies the $300 a week stipend? That's, this is what I'm missing. So maybe, and a lot of folks out there are missing it too. So maybe someone can educate all of us.
Mr. Chair?
I think what you're, uh, what you're, what you're missing is, and I'm not going to do with heavy lifting, it's additional duties and responsibilities that were taken on when we didn't have, uh, when our finance director left. And, uh, the same thing with the town accountant. There were some of the duties that had fallen on her that, uh, were over and above what, uh, what she's supposed to be doing. And there, there were jobs at the positions that the town administrator, town finance director was doing, and I, I think both of them. Dan, you had something?
Yeah, I mean, if everything's getting done and there's no heavy lifting left to be done, you know, my position on it, I voted against the TA. Why don't we just not hire the position because all the work's getting done and we don't have any more work for a TA to do? So, you know, who's doing all the work? If we're doing all the work and, you know, no one should get any extra money for a job that doesn't exist, then maybe we shouldn't even fill the job. Let it go another few months. Let it go till next May, you know? And, and again, throwing this out there, you know, just what isn't getting done on that position that we're going to fill? Is it procurement? We have somebody. Is it accounting? We have somebody. I know the accounting department and treasurer's department needs help because the finance director position was the town treasurer. I talked to Ellen today, okay? She may have to help reconcile the cash, okay? Discussion will be when we're going to certify funds. We don't have to right away, you know? We have time. Sooner or later, DOR will knock on our door. But, talked to her today. Now, there is a segregation of duties. She can't collect, but she may have to help reconcile some of those cash accounts that typically, that is the job of the town treasurer, former finance director, to babysit, to keep an eye on, to mind the store on that book of cash, the cash book. In layman's terms, 38 bank accounts that need to be reconciled, cash in, cash out. That is the primary function of the town treasurer. Mind the cash account. Without those accountants reconciled and then handed over to the town accountant to post and to do what she has to do, and she does her own reconciliation to make sure the numbers match up before she posts, okay? That hasn't been done yet. And I don't know how this board thinks that's going to be done when we eliminated a finance position, finance director, and substituted that person with a one-day-a-week consultant. I, I, I'm anticipating the deadline is not going to, it's going to come.
Let's be honest, we did not, we didn't do the substitution. It happened during the time of the interim that was stated that we needed, with the absence of an assistant treasurer, that the interim with the hours we had could not do the treasurer duties. So we brought that treasurer consultant in with an interim here. He brought, he recruited and brought this person in. And so we do have extra support in there. And I would be interested in sitting with Ms. Hunter and going over this because this is what I'm looking at. We voted a higher salary and more hours for the accountant months ago. And the task of closing out the year is the same this year as last year, as the year before, as the year before. And I'm just not quite getting why all of a sudden it's requiring so many more buckets of money to be given to the people because it's the same thing closing out the year, every year. We've never had this kind of problem. I think that we should have a talk with Sarah Hunter, see what's going on there. And I think what we should get our audit team in here to just take a look around and give us some feedback, just so we know, are, is it really a big struggle or, or can they help? You know, can people get this sorted out in time for us to set a tax rate? I'd rather know heads up right now if we need to increase the consultant hours than find out November 1st. Then we're in trouble, yes.
We have a response from the, from the town accountant along with this. Uh, and it has, because you're, the, the follow-up was, uh, fiscal year '21 closed and state reporting that was asked at the last meeting. And she had responded along with the stipends. State statute revenues are booked, uh, ought to be booked and closed by 6:30 2021. And the town books closed by 7:15 2021. In order to close the fiscal year '21 books and complete state reporting, the following needs to be done. Reconciliation of all funds and accounts. This can be done, this can't be done until all cash has been reconciled and posted over to the ledger from the treasurer's office. I have most cash postings. I am waiting for about half of June and interest for all months. Treasurer needs to reconcile their cash book to the bank accounts by month. I believe this has been done through December. Accountant reconciles cash balances to the treasurer's cash book by month. Treasurer and accountant correct any reconciling items and/or variances. Accountant reconciles all ledger accounts and funds and makes any final adjustments. Once the accountant has the final numbers, books are closed and final balances rolled forward to have beginning balances for fiscal '22. Accountant and the treasurer can go through the process of pulling the information from the ledger for the state reports that are due. Assessor, town clerk, water sewer departments are also part of the tax rate recap process.
Yes.
And let's see what else was here. Uh, do, you want the, uh-
No.
There's a lot of other stuff that-
Mr. Chair, they're still working on December.
I, I don't know.
We have the staff to finish the reconciliations in the treasurer's office.
Excuse me, if I could say something.
Go ahead.
We have been chasing this now since November, since the hiring of an interim. And I, I'm not quite buying this, we're back in December thing. This, Ms. Hunter told us, you were there, Dan, where things were when we met with this treasurer candidate. Cash was kind of, kind of in, was my understanding.
It was 38 accounts, so I don't know.
Yeah, but I mean, she said the cash book was kind of in. So I, I'm not, I mean, we've increased the accountant hours and pay. We've brought in a consultant who brings in a team of people. She doesn't just come by herself. This has been going on for months. And I, I realize, you know, giving them a little leeway, but I think that the time has come to get some deadlines here because these are the same, these are the same reports that we did last year and the accountant was here the year before. So I'd like a heads up exactly what the problem is and I think bringing the audit team in now would be a good idea.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dan.
Kathy, you mentioned that, you know, said something about the cash being in. Cash is in, but the accounts have not been reconciled, okay?
Did you look at the revenue report though, the amount of-
I spoke with her today and she said the revenue, she, as the town accountant hadn't, the revenue number's not solid, okay? That's not her exact vernacular, but the, she's waiting on the top line. She said the expenditures were in and she has a budget to actual on the expenditures, but not revenue. So that's how she explained it to me. So we can't know the bottom line if we don't know the top line. But seems to me it's static, the, the expenditures. So the expenses, what was dispersed, all the bills were paid.
We're good at spending, yes.
Yeah, well, she has those and, and it makes sense that the town accountant would have a better handle on the expenses because those are checks that are being cut. They're liars. So those are disbursements. She can track the outs, but the ins into cash has to be reconciled before she's going to take that revenue figure and do what she's got to do with it.
What I'm suggesting is perhaps we can, you and I, because we're doing the treasurer thing, if the board approves of it, sit down with Sarah Hunter and get-
Well, like to meet her Thursday, she said, I heard.
So get some deadlines here because, um-
You know?
This is, this is the time that we should get some deadlines. We, we can't afford to go much further. This is, this is the time to know how far off are we really? Because we've been getting the same, they've been saying December, since December. I've been getting the same statement that we're only up through December. I got that statement in January. I got that statement in February. I got this statement in March. The, the forum, the board members that were here know how much trouble I got into for hounding for reports on this. But I got that same answer in April. I got that same answer in May. Okay? That's not okay. That's the same answer. Do you understand what I'm saying? I'm not saying I'm an accountant. I'm not.
I agree with you. We should be, we should be, we should meet with her Thursday.
That's, yeah, there's something not okay.
I think we need to do some interviews the same day. We might as well come in. You know?
You, are you, you and who?
Kathy, we're on the subcommittee to hire a treasurer, so I mean, we can kill-
You're going to meet with her on-
We could, if we get a treasurer, I hope that we could, you know, curtail some of this, you know, discussion and solve the problem. I just, we're, it seemed like we're on the five-yard line and, and, you know, I feel like we're fumbling, you know? I just-
I agree.
And part of it's not our fault.
So you'll report back at the next meeting what you find out when you, when you sit down and speak with her?
Is that okay with the board if we, we talk to Sarah? I'm not going to run up the bill. I think it's probably a 15-minute conversation, you know? She's here anyways. But I don't want to take her away from her work because she's talking to us, she's not doing her thing, you know?
You're going to take 15 minutes?
I'll give him 20 minutes.
I'll keep my mouth shut.
I'll keep my eye on him.
I can be brief.
He does all right.
I'm always really quiet. I think Kathy ran the meeting, you know?
Well, with, with both of yous, I don't know, it could be a problem. Could be a couple hours. All right, we'll, we'll, should be all set with that.
No, can we go back? Just one question. You had mentioned that there were, um, duties that were taken on, uh, that justifies this stipend.
Which stipend?
The $300 a week. Can you list some of those for us?
I don't have the, uh, the paperwork, but Dan and, and Jason were, uh, they were supposed to meet today, but there was some kind of a problem. And I think you have the list of all the duties.
We talked today.
Oh, you did? Okay. Uh, Jason, maybe you can, uh, throw a couple out there?
The, uh, the biggest takeaway for me is, in terms of the responsibilities that Catherine has taken on, they're over and above the position of what she was hired for. The stipend brings her salary to more in line with what those duties would represent if that was her actual job description. I believe that when the town administrator is hired, he needs to evaluate the job, what is necessary of the job, what qualifications are necessary for the job, and then reevaluate whether or not we have the person to do the job and whether or not, like Catherine, Kathy said, whether or not we have changed the job position to the point where it has to be reposted and has to be, um, redone. I'm not sure if that's going to be the case because it's going to depend on what the town administrator decides or whether or not that's going to go back to a simple $19 an hour clerk position who coordinates things? Or whether or not she's still going to be here without being supervised because there is no real supervisor for that position and left to make those decisions on her own.
Thank you. Go ahead. You want to rebuttal?
No, I, I still have a question. We mentioned duties, responsibilities. Could you expand on that and be specific? What?
No, I don't think I could because, because I don't have the exact understanding of the position because I'm not here 24, I'm not here every day during the day to have that grasp of what that position entails and what goes on every day. And that's why I think it's important that we have a town administrator who's here, who can make those decisions and give us the proper guidance to make accurate and good decisions. And we don't have that.
All right, so right now, it's a gut feel?
It's, uh, based on what I pulled from other town administrator assistants and what they were getting paid. I believe I pulled four different similar-sized towns and they were all between $32 and $38 an hour, um, which would put it more in lines of what, um, a typical job that Nancy had when she was here, which is not what the job is supposed to be. It's supposed to be a simple clerk that does simple coordinations. But since we don't have anybody here to supervise that, make sure that happens, who can make the decisions on a day-to-day basis because we're not here, it falls to the Catherine. And that is why I've, I've stuck strong to my decision.
Okay, so Catherine then is making day-to-day decisions for the town on our behalf?
Not when it comes to the town, but in terms of some of the standard stuff that, uh, I would not expect a clerk to make, yes.
So you checked out other towns, they pay this, and, and is the job description similar? I mean, we're paying-
The job description is not similar to what Catherine's job description is because, like I said, the job description for Catherine and what we hired her for is not what she's doing because she's unsupervised and doesn't have somebody here to take on the additional responsibilities that fall upon her.
I, I just want to be clear. So we're, we're, we're basing the, the stipend on other positions in other towns that are, that are more robust than what we have.
Said they were similar. Where do you say that they're more robust?
Well, did you compare them?
Yes.
I, I, I thought, I asked you that and you said, yeah, they're not quite the same-
I thought, I asked you that, and you said, "Yeah, they're not quite the same, they have a lot, they have more."
I didn't say they had more, I just said they're similar.
They're similar.
So, some of them had less.
Some of them had less?
Yes.
And there's extra duties and responsibilities that we've given this position, but...
We haven't given it, no, they're there.
She's assumed.
Yes.
But we're not able to name them.
Go ahead, Dan, you had some follow-up.
I don't have it in front of me, but, I mean, in prior meetings, I think we've discussed this. I think this is our fourth meeting to some degree. She gave us the two columns, this is what you hired me for, and this is what I'm doing. Now, I think it's up to the board of selectmen, and again, we're the hiring-and-firing committee here, you know? So, if there's anything on that list that she shouldn't be doing, it's just, we can, you know, as a board, we can't do it individually, and it's, you know, it's either, you know, five zip or three-two or four-one, but collectively, as a board, we decide what it is she's to do and what she isn't to do. So, with the absence of that directive, people call her and ask her to do things, and we've kind of ratified it through our interaction in letting her do this. That's how I see it. We let her do it, and we're not telling her, "Don't do it, it's not your job." And I think to Jason's to point, right? And again, this is a question, and it's a matter of opinion, and you might not see it this way, but if you hire somebody to be an executive assistant or whatever label you want to attach to that role, all right? She's somewhat a liaison between the board of selectmen, she is, but she's also a liaison between, somebody who walks in the building and just doesn't know where to go and who to talk to, and "I have a problem, help me, Mr. Wizard." She's that kind of like all, she's like the Swiss Army knife at town hall right now. Now, if we had a town interim finance director, or we had a finance director, or a TA, or that executive-level position, she'd have someone to lean on, she'd say, "Oh, so-and-so asked me about this, you know? Denise, what do you want, you know, what should we do?" And then Denise said, "I'll take care of it for you." She doesn't have that person above her, so she is working autonomously, you know? Unsupervised, other than when we chime in, I think, you know? Where she's working as best she can with all the departments and some of those things. I mean, the dialogue has been that, "We'll put it back on the department heads." You know, whenever you do that, you know, are you going to get interference? Are you going to get, you know, some resistance, you know? And she's a nice person, and she takes on all that, okay? So, if she had to have a flaw, it's that she's too nice, okay? It's not a bad flaw to have, all right? I don't know that I have that flaw, but she does, all right? So, for that reason, right, gut feeling, you know I'm an accountant, I think you do, you know? Hundreds of clients, and I look at what people make for a living. Nineteen dollars an hour to me doesn't pass my smell test in this marketplace. Do I think it's thirty-eight dollars an hour? I haven't drawn that conclusion. My gut feeling, if you want me to go with what I know and what I see from hundreds of people that come into my office and who wakes, makes what based upon what they do in conversations with people that I interact with, I'd say it's a twenty-five to thirty-dollar-an-hour job, okay? Can I prove that at this juncture? No. All the more reason why it behooves us to get the salary assessment on who does what in town government because I am not an expert in town government, I'm learning as I go here, all right? I'm trying, all right? But if you spot the issue, you can solve the problem. So, we can go and compare and contrast. But again, all of our discussion and debates, I think it's all going to be a moot point soon as we'll fill the TA and we get the treasurer in there. Then we're going to take a lot of that stuff and say, instead of asking her, "Hey, you know, should you be doing that?" I think we're going to look to our executive-level position person, the TA, and say, "What do you think should be the structure on delegating what?"
Right, so...
But we don't have that yet.
Yeah, if we...
So, you don't have anything specific either for me?
I have, what I have is what she provided us, and it was like four pages. It had the columns on her duties when she was hired and when, so it was in print. I didn't, I don't have it in front of me.
So...
Aren't you working on, you and Jason are working on this meeting with her?
Yes.
And you haven't finalized it? I think we, as a board, we appointed you people to handle this for us.
We did, she, she didn't come in today because of what, quarantine? And it's just so, you know... If, I have an opinion on it, okay? If you want me to make a motion, okay? Her motion is not that she gets paid nineteen dollars an hour. I slept on what you said last time, why should she get an hourly and a stipend? You double-dipping, you know, you know, you grabbing two cookies instead of one? I don't think so because you hire her at this level, and then you expect her to do this. Now, if you disagree with me on that and say, "No, she's doing the same level of work that we hired her to do," then I beg to differ. All due respect.
Can we wrap this up?
I neither agree nor disagree with you.
All due respect.
Based upon, you haven't given me any specifics on, on the difference between this and this. So, I can't, I can neither agree or disagree with you because you've given me nothing, you've given me no specifics to argue for or against.
If you're asking me, have I looked for a database outside of town hall to see what Merrimack and other towns in West Newbury are paying for that position? I don't know that I could find that exact, you know, person or animal, so to speak. I don't know that it's the same situation. She's got this hybrid position, you know?
Well, I think it's, I think it's kind of morphed.
I don't, that's why I'm asking the question.
I think she, she's the Swiss Army knife in town hall. She does what you ask her to do, she tries to do the best she can, she's a liaison, she's a scheduler, she's, you know, talking with IT people on issues, you know? She's been before us several times explaining to her what a job was hired and, you know, and what it is now, so it morphed.
This is the problem right now, is that, you know, we have, we're poised to do these interviews for the town administrator. So, just to wrap this up, I don't want to just have this person walk in and have this person dealing with this list of stipends that we voted and didn't deal with. I feel that we should start phasing them down, and I feel that we should set working hours. Nobody in this town hall works unsupervised. Everybody has working hours that they were hired to do. They're supposed to be in here...
Well, who's supervising them when they're here?
They, well, the board of selectmen, we hear back from people, say, "I went down to your office to find something, and no one was there," okay? That's what you hear. That's how you know, that's how you knew if Nancy was out sick for a day. Nancy Lewandowski worked for this town for thirty years. She started at about three dollars an hour, and she worked her way up the ladder, okay? She didn't walk in and say, "Give me a big bucket of money." She started out at such a low salary, she said no one thought anyone would take the job, okay? So, that's a different scenario. Right now, we're talking about bringing in a town administrator, and I just don't want them to walk into a circus sideshow here, kind of. I'd like to, I'd like to address the stipends at, like, maybe the next meeting. Let's just give some time for people to think about it, let's at least phase them down, and let's set some reasonable working hours so that people are in the town hall when it's open, okay? That's all I'm asking for, some normalcy.
I'd like to, I'd like to address the question, too, Kathy.
Sure.
You say that, that members of the general public have come in looking to the selectman's office, but for God's sakes, up until the last month, the town, town hall's been closed for, to the public for probably close to a year, maybe longer.
It's been open for more than a month, and they've called, too. And I don't want to get into throwing, throwing any stones on anybody. I just want to say, let's set some working hours. Everybody reports to somebody, there's no unsupervised employees in this town, okay?
Well, aren't we going to let the committee that we voted, Dan and Jason, look at this? And they were supposed to be reporting back to us, and I think it was, Dan, what was that, to the end of the month?
We extended it for thirty days, but Jason and I did discuss it today, okay? And correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but I think we're in agreement on this, that the stipend has to continue until the TA position's filled, okay?
And then it disappeared, you're saying that, boom.
Yes, and then I won't be in here saying "extended" once we get a TA in the building.
Now, why, and the stipend on the council on aging worker...
I don't know anything about that. I don't know if I was late to the party on that one. But I don't know about council on aging.
And I'm not saying that, that was correcting for the, but that's what the council of aging board decided, and I don't know...
I don't think they can do that.
I...
I'm not familiar with council on aging.
I just know that, uh...
Bill, did you have another response? We beat this to death.
I don't think so, yeah. That was when Denise came in, right before...
All due respect, I don't know what you're talking about on council on aging.
Okay, so I'll say we...
It predates me.
We had Lynn Stanton, you remember Lynn Stanton?
I do.
So, when she left, we had a month or so with no director. So, the outreach worker stepped up, was doing more duties, more hours. We voted a stipend until the position is filled. Well, now, when I asked to see the list of stipends, the stipend's continuing even though we filled the director position.
Well, that's a situation you might want to scrutinize. I mean, I'm sitting here telling you with the best of my knowledge, when you fill the TA and the treasurer position, some of those stipends, if they don't go away completely, they're going to go like this.
So, they're going to go.
All right?
All right, look, we keep, we keep repeating ourselves over and over again. Is there anything new to add?
Well, while we're on it, why don't we just set the new hours for the accountant, the administrative coordinator, and the...
That comes in down a little bit lower here, town hall employees' hours.
Well, we're on the topic, we're on the topic, let's just do it. Get it over with.
Well, I have the hours, you would ask, somebody had asked at the last meeting...
Yep.
For, to look at the hours.
Yep.
And I think we, you all have them? Highway, highway department is Monday through Friday, seven to three, the highway superintendent.
Okay.
The health department, the administrator, Monday through Thursday, ten to five.
Yep.
The health, the board of health agent, Monday through Thursday, eight to four.
Okay, good.
Council on Aging, the director, Monday through Thursday, eight to five-thirty.
So, she doesn't work Friday at all?
Outreach...
I'm sorry, did she not work Fridays, the director?
Again, the hours, Monday through Thursday, eight to five-thirty. That would indicate that, not here on Friday.
Okay.
Outreach, Monday, eight to five, Tuesday to Thursday, eight to four, Friday, eight to twelve.
Okay.
Treasurer, Monday through Thursday, eight to four-thirty. Town accountant, Monday, eight to five-thirty, Tuesday to Thursday, eight to four, Friday, eight to twelve. Administrator coordinator, Monday and Wednesday, two-thirty to five, Tuesday and Thursday, eight to four, and with four hours of float time. And when I asked her about that, she indicated that if there was a selectman's meeting on the Monday night, every other Monday night, that would be used for the float hours, and then she would fill in on the other days to get up to the correct hours. The board, the assessor.
Say that one more time, though, because I thought we had her...
Excuse me?
Well, I thought we had her in the mornings because we wanted someone here in the mornings when the town hall opened. We had her nine to twelve, Monday through...
Tuesday and Thursday, eight to four.
Tuesday, Thursday, eight to four.
Monday and Wednesday, two-thirty to five. We did indicate that we wanted her to come in late on Monday so that she would be available for the meetings on Monday night, and that was what her float hours were going to come.
But once the TA comes, that won't be needed.
Board of, yeah, board of assessors. Assessor, Monday, twelve to eight, Tuesday and Thursday, eight to four. Economic development, the director, Monday, eight to eight, Tuesday to Thursday, nine to four. Conservation agent, Monday through Friday, nine to four. What's missing is custodian, and there was one other one that, oh, was the building inspector.
I thought I saw his listed, are you sure? Oh, no, I saw his paste-up.
But we'll get, well, you have that?
Can we change the Wednesday for the administrative coordinator to the morning hours? Because it doesn't make any sense to come in that late on Wednesdays. Yeah, because that's what she was hired on.
What's, what difference does it make?
Because it's, the town hall closes at four, so she, there's no point. I mean, people come in the morning, pretty much. I would say, we hired her Monday through Thursday, nine to twelve, that was the first schedule, and then some extra hours on a Monday night.
Well...
So, I would, I would stick with...
I don't see any problem with the two, Monday, Monday and Wednesday, two-thirty, she's only twenty, what, the twenty-five hours a week? And four of those are float hours.
Well, because, let me just make a point. The float hours should be during the town hall operating hours, not on a holiday and not on a weekend. That's my point. I don't want to see any more pay records that have floating hours when the public isn't in the building because that position is our face. As we said, that, the one real thing I think we can all agree on is, we're not here all week, and that's why that position was hired. That's one of the biggest reasons it was hired.
You're, Jason, I'm sorry, you had a comment?
Yeah, my only concern is in terms of limiting the float hours to when the town hall is opening. Sometimes the duties have required her to be here when the town hall is not open.
During an emergency.
During an emergency.
Well, that's once in a blue moon, so let's hope we don't have any more emergencies. But my point is that when you hire and post a job and you tell an employee, "We're going to want you here Monday through Thursday, nine to twelve," and then the town meeting extends the hours, I think people would expect that Monday through Thursday, that position, that office would be occupied in the morning and then into the afternoon, like, well, like when Nancy used to be here. She was always in that office.
That's pretty good, coming from, coming from the member of the board of selectmen that emails on, late on a Sunday night expecting a response when she's not even working or on a Saturday night or late on a Friday night.
You know what, Mr. Chairman? And again, I've addressed that in emails to you and to the administrative coordinator, perhaps you don't read them, but I said, "I am working all week long, and on the weekend is when I get my thoughts together to get my agenda items in for Wednesday." And now I put in the title, "No need to respond till the work week." So, nobody needs to respond to me on a Sunday night, no need. I just do it because that's when I have some downtime.
Well, that'd be a pleasure. Okay, look, I think we're beating this to...
No, we're not, I think...
So, we're all set on highway, health department, council on aging. It seems like everybody's in agreement, other than Kathy wants the administrative coordinator to come in on morning.
Wednesday morning.
Look, I like the idea of, we all, we already talked about coming in later on a Monday so that...
Right.
She could be here for the selectman's meeting, and that's what part of the float hours we're going to be used for.
But once we hire the town...
I'll entertain a motion to have the administrative coordinator's hours, Monday, Monday and Wednesday, two-thirty to five, Tuesday and Thursday, eight to four, with four float hours. Does somebody make a motion on that?
I'll make the motion as long as it amends to the floating hours are during the operating time of the town hall, that's all. Not on the weekend, that's all.
Discussion, discussion point.
Go ahead, Dan.
Come on.
If it's too rigid, it'll break. I mean, she gets, like, for instance, there was an issue with the system down, right?
Yep.
Email, she came in on Saturday, you know?
I don't mind paying for extra hours, I just want the regular...
So, if you have it be rigid, she can't come in on Saturday?
No, we'll pay the extra hours. I don't mind paying the extra hours, we've been doing that all along.
So, how's that any different than a float? If she comes in on a Saturday, isn't that a float?
Well, wait, so if she doesn't have to come in for the four hours, we're not going to pay her for that four hours that week? So, if she doesn't have an emergency, we're not paying those...
I don't know that it's an emergency, I don't know if she really, really could do it on a Friday.
It's float hours, what don't you understand about float hours?
Okay, well, what I'm saying is, what other...
Flexibility is what it is, it's flexibility.
I'm thinking of fairness. What other position here do we tell, at the clerical level especially, does Lori Benson get to say, "Well, I'll be in Thursday afternoons, and I'll float some hours"? No, she's got a schedule on her door, and she has to be there, it's a job.
Well...
Welcome to the working market.
Lori, Lori has her hours listed, Monday to Thursday, ten to five.
Because her board tells her to be there.
But I don't, I don't believe that that woman is here and gets done at five o'clock most days. I go by, and her light's on, and the vehicle is out here later than five o'clock. Jason, you had something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with Kathy that if the board agrees with Kathy in terms of, if there's an emergency, that the extra hours will be understood, then, yeah, you could definitely limit the four hours float within the normal operating times of the board, of the town hall.
I think it really, it just goes to one Monday, one Monday a month because she'd be, one Monday every other week because she's, she'd be here for the selectman's meeting every other Monday night, which would take up the float hours, and then...
Till 8:30.
Because you're only talking about four, four float hours on the off week.
So, if you go tonight, for an example, if she were here, she wasn't home on what she's doing, right? We started at, what, 5:30? 8:30, three, three-plus hours? So, that leaves her 45 minutes to go do the oddball stuff during the week, because she's sitting here listening to us.
But, is she gonna be sitting here, once we hire the town administrator?
Probably not.
How many people do we need in here to babysit us?
For now.
Just the TA.
For now, she's gonna be here. Unless we don't want her here, you don't want her here?
Well, I think she could leave probably most nights by 7:30. We've seen, like, visitors and Zooms. We're done with all that. Right now, we're just doing our regular...
Well, if we're gonna set hours, then we'll tell her, what, 5:30 to 7:30, and then you cut out? What if we need...
No, what I'm asking is with the float hours, as long as they're on the days with, and they're worked in the town hall, fine, during the working hours. I just don't feel that it's fair, all of our other town employees have to be here in their offices. They don't have the choice to take a pile of work home. We don't give them that choice, because we want, when the public comes in, we want them to be able to go wherever they want and ask their questions, or see who they want.
Okay. Do we have a motion to have the administrative coordinator, Monday and Wednesday, 2:30 to 5:00, four float hours? Tuesday and Thursday, eight to four? And we have a motion on that?
Are the float hours, are the float hours in...
I'll make a motion to that point, but I want the float hours to be discretionary.
To be discretionary, her discretion?
On her discretion.
Well...
Motion, motion to, for the administrative coordinator, Monday, Monday and Wednesday, 2:30 to 5:00. Tuesday and Thursday, eight to four. Four float hours discretionary. The motion, is there a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Bill.
This position, regardless of who it was, was hired to be the face of this board. I don't understand how they could be the face of the board if they're not here. And again, no one, no one here, other than that one position, has float hours. It's inherently unfair to everyone else in this building that works under the same conditions not to be able to be extended the same privileges. My question is, once you open that door, how do you close it to anyone after that? We said, you're gonna set a bad precedence here that I just can't buy into. There's no reason these, other than emergency situations, which they arise, I get it, and emergency situations are one-offs. They're not the norm. All the hours, I agree with Kathy, should be during regular business hours here for the town. And the float, it should only be considered every other Monday during our meetings. But, other than that, I think that position needs to be here during the majority of the day, because they are the face of us while we're not here, in our absence.
Well, do you also want to adjust the accountants' hours, who, Monday, eight to Town hall closes at four. You want to adjust that? You want to adjust...
Why, why would I want to do that?
You want, because you're talking about when there's nobody here at town hall. Counselor and aging director...
But, that's the majority of the, the majority of the time. Eight to, eight to 5:30 is, she's here every working hour that the town is, is open. So, why would I want to cut back and say, "That's just an illogical argument"?
What I don't think that you grasp, Bill...
I don't grasp it a lot right now.
I can, I can tell that.
Yeah.
But, what you don't grasp is that, is that the town accountant is a full-time position, the administrative coordinator is a part-time position. Dan, you had something?
Yeah, just the point. I mean, this position is unique, okay? Not only does she serve the public, that's the general gist of what we're all trying to do here, right? But she's support for the board of selectmen. Would you agree to that?
Yes.
Okay? She supports him.
That's why we hired her.
So, I try not to monopolize her time and be a pest, but every now and then, let's say I want a copy of a contract or something, right? I work days. So, my personal opinion is, I want to do what I do during the day, and if she's available in the evening, or on Saturday or Sunday, and it's up to her. I'm not gonna take up a weekend if she says it's family time, I'll stay out of her hair. But, if I can't get free time until 7:00 o'clock at night, and she wants to talk to me on the phone for 10 minutes to ask some questions or find out some information for the upcoming meeting, that's a useful resource to me. So, I, I don't want to be boxed in eight to four, nine to five. That's my personal preference, because I'm busy during the day. I don't, I don't work second shift usually, on tax season I do, but I try not to the rest of the year.
I'm not willing to block off weekend time. I mean, that's just not fair. I think that if she wants to answer a question to you on the weekend, that should be discretionary.
If you think four hours is too much, maybe we pair it back to two and see if that works.
No other employee here has...
Compromise with you, two hours.
If I, if I text, if I text any other position in this town, sometimes they will call me on a weekend or a night, but that's their choice. They don't have to. And I would never expect them to. I mean, they do have working hours. So, I think that it's, it's not a good idea. I don't want to see hours booked on holidays or weekends unless something is blown up or broken. That happens, fine. You know, put the flood out, put the fire out, whatever it takes. But, no other position here has the ability to move their hours around at will all the time. When people have something going on, sure, like you and I have talked about, I want us to be a family-friendly employer. You've got something going on, you gotta go pick your kid up from school, absolutely. Go take care of that, you know? Absolutely. I'm not being rigid, I'm just being fair, because the other employees in here, believe me, are noticing. And this, and this administrative coordinator is supervised by us. We're supposed to set these hours. It's okay to get input from the administrative coordinator, but ultimately, just like the board of health votes Lori's hours, we have to set a schedule. We have to, we have to say, "This is when we want the person here." So, I'm asking you, given this schedule, does, does these, this position not want that four hours of pay, except on the weeks that we need her here at night until the TA gets here? I'm not sure what the message is. That's what I'm not understanding.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, Monday through, Monday and Wednesday, 2:30 to 5:00. Tuesday and Thursday, eight to four. With four float hours at, according to the motion, Dan, was it at her discretion?
Discretionary.
Discretionary.
In her best judgment, I trust her.
Any further discussion on that?
I don't think it's fair.
All in favor of, of those hours? All in favor of the hours? Two in favor, opposed? Three? Motion, motion defeated. Do we have another, do we have another motion?
Yes, Kathy has a motion.
So, so, my question just is, do you want, do we want the whole 25 hours? We want to stabilize the paycheck here, I would assume, right? I mean, is that it? Yep?
That's the idea of having float hours, since she's a part-time employee, and it gives her the ability to try to maintain her hours within those, within that 25. It's not working. The, in terms of being the face of town hall and being here in town hall?
Yeah.
Well, originally, she was only hired for 19 hours.
I know, and she was here just nine to 12.
She was here now more than what she originally was...
Well, I know, she was here nine to 12. Well, she was originally hired 14 hours.
Yeah.
14 hours.
But, regardless...
Yes.
I agree that the float hours should be maintained within the hours that the town hall is open.
Yeah.
I agree with you 100% because you also said that if there is an emergency, we're gonna expect to pay more.
Yes.
Hours, which is fair, and I understand that.
Yep.
So, yeah, I, I would agree with your, your motion.
Okay, but let me ask you this, because this confuses me. We approve the extra hours when our administrative coordinator works more, and we've said that. When they work the hours, we gotta pay them. And if we don't like what they're doing when they're working too many hours, we deal with it going forward, right?
That's our job.
Okay. But, I've heard, been contacted by the board of health, that their clerk has cause to have worked additional hours. It's being denied. So, I thought that when you have solid reason that an employee who's hourly has to work some additional hours, like unusual circumstances, like we had with the trash, so what happened is her other workload backed up, and she, her boss signed off to put her in for 37 hours, the accountant says, "No." Why can't we pay out of the salary like we're gonna have to for the administrative coordinator? And then, you know, we'll have to true it up when we get to the April town meeting. I mean, that's what we've always done.
Is she an hourly employee?
Lori?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. We only have two, I think, right now in here.
They can't do that. They can tell her to go home, but they cannot not pay her.
Well, they tried to pay her. They signed the thing and sent it in, and it was denied. And I do think we've, we got a little problem here, because you have to pay her.
I wouldn't think so.
Yep.
See the issues?
Absolutely. But, that's, that's not, not same issue, because we're paying someone for every hour. So, don't, don't confuse the two.
Right, I mean...
If it's not being paid, the other one is.
I asked the board of health to send some documentation to me about why this happened. You know, what's changed here? Why is this? And the documentation I got said that because she was handling so many of those complaint calls, she got behind on her minutes and her other regular...
Understandable. Completely understandable.
Okay. So, she wants some extra hours to catch it up. That's all.
Dan, go ahead.
But, if that's a grievance or a thing that needs to be tweaked, it's gotta come, as an agenda item here, and tell us what you need and what's not getting done, and isn't that the...
I think it's an accountant question, because let's say we go with this schedule, and the idea that the float hours are within the operating hours, then, I don't know, this room floods. Watch, we'll flood now. And Catherine has to come down here on a Saturday, deal with the flood with Steve, the maintenance guy. So, now, we have to pay Steve, right? I have to pay Catherine, right? So, we're gonna pay them from their regular salary, right? We're not gonna take it from someone else's salary. Right?
Gonna pay it from some line item.
I don't think legally you can take it from another line.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, do you take it from that, and you know that they're gonna be running out of money? So, when we get to the end of the year, town meeting, that's why we do the transfers? Because these things do happen.
You tweak them within a certain range.
Right, but...
Within a parameter, a deviation.
So, yeah, but I...
Not anything radical.
Right. So...
We agree. So, but if board of health's not happy, they gotta come in here and tell us what they need to adjust. I'm not a mind reader. It's the first time I heard they had a problem over there.
Well, it's not them, it's the, the accountant is saying she can't give the money, because that will cause a deficit in that account.
She's right on that. So, we have to...
Well, yeah, but we've done this before.
But, we're doing it on another line item right now. So, why is it different?
That's what I'm hearing. I don't know.
Because they're related. It's, it's the function of the...
Yeah, that's not right. I mean, I really can't imagine that Ellen would have ever said that, because I don't believe she even thinks she remotely has the authority to. If she gets the hours and she just...
All right, is there a motion on, on the administrative coordinator's hours?
Okay, yes, with the four flexible hours being during the town's oper, the town hall operating hours.
I'll second that. Which is what, nine to five, eight to four?
Eight to four, I guess, is right.
Eight to four?
With the exception of the selectmen's meeting on the Monday nights.
Right, exactly.
Eight to five, give her a window of an hour each way?
Eight to five, fine, because there's still people here.
Well, the, that would suffice for the members of the board of selectmen that work during the day, that can, that can get ahold of her and get paperwork or questions answered. Okay, float hours, when town hall is open, except meeting nights, selectmen's meeting nights.
Or, well, the float hours aren't for emergencies. Emergencies are emergencies. That's the...
Are emergencies.
Eight to five, give her, give her... Right? No?
Well, everyone else is here eight till five. She's working till five on Tuesdays anyway.
What's the motion? And a second, on...
The four, the schedule as, as requested, with the four float hours being during the town hall operating hours of eight to five.
Okay, with the exception of selectmen's meeting nights are emergencies.
Yes. Well, no, emergencies are a whole nother thing. That's not for, that would be...
Without emergencies, all right.
We'll pay her.
Okay. Motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous. All right. That was like going to the dentist.
Well, that takes care of two line items.
Bagnall, PTA, Bagnall, PTA to host a trick-or-treat event at the Bagnall on Saturday, October 30th. I think we need a vote to allow them to do that.
Move favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Approval of a one-day liquor license for True North Brewing for Groveland Day events on September 24th.
Motion to approve one-day liquor license for True North Brewing for the Groveland Day event on 9/24.
And we have a note, a liquor license, please, please make the board aware that the time has been changed from what was originally in the agenda packet from 5:30 to 8:30. Changed to six to 8:30. So, instead of 5:30, 8:30, it's six to 8:30.
Is that gonna be, down at Pines?
Uh, yes. Groveland Day.
Well, 9/24 is the road race, right?
Is the road race. 9/25 is actually Groveland Day.
Yep. And then, the 25th is a Saturday down at the Pines?
Okay.
Yes. Big day.
Motion and, a motion with, who made the motion?
I did.
Bill, who seconded it?
I second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous.
Motion to approve a special event permit for Groveland Day for 9/24 and 9/25?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous. We took care of the next one. Plumerity budget process and start. Kathy, you requested this.
Yeah, well, you can kinda tie it in with the fall town meeting date. I just feel like we should start thinking about, you know, we could pull one of old Denise's old budget letters if we want, but we probably should send something out before the TA gets here, just to get people thinking. You know, the usual language, you know? We expect it to be tight. Don't put in any special request for salary adjustments, put in separately, blah, blah, blah. Right? I mean, we need to get the department heads start working on their budgets. It's the fall.
Yeah, I think it's a little early. Typically, the capital starts before the finance committee. The capital finishes up, you know, somewhere around the end of December, and then passes that information on to finance.
Well, last...
Finance kinda wraps up. So maybe the capital, it would be nice to get an idea what capital requests the departments might have to get money.
Last time Ellen wrote, Ellen wrote the capital letter, so maybe...
Certainly a little early, though.
Not for capital.
For the budget.
Yeah.
Not for capital, I don't think.
It's time to start the budget process.
Last year with the school.
Yeah.
We are the capital...
Committee.
Committee. For all...
We are.
Yeah.
Yeah, for all intents and purposes, because we don't have a capital improvement committee. So...
Who's got the file? It used to be like a spreadsheet on attrition or replacement costs for certain things. I don't know what equipment and capital. Is there a...
There was a spreadsheet last year.
Is there an inventory list, or for lack of a better word?
There is.
There was one last year.
Yep, we had one.
Can we gather the info and be ready?
Well, I think that's where we should focus our priority on now. Typically, this is the time when we would start, when I was on capital improvement, we would start about now, in order to complete our tasks by the early to mid-December, so that we could pass on that information...
To finance.
To finance.
Yeah.
So...
I think you're right. We should be a month ahead of them, or more.
We usually three to four months ahead of finance, because these things are planned out five years out. We try to give a five-year window.
We need to talk with whoever needs the equipment, whether it's a cruiser, or a radio system, or a truck.
Or a new dump truck, absolutely.
I mean, those are lengthy discussions. Need new fire truck, that's not a 10-minute task.
I think that's why you cast that line out now.
And then if you don't hear from us, kind of speak now, or don't come back and say we missed you. It'll happen anyway.
Okay, so we can get that out to the department heads on the capital requests.
Was that, I didn't want to jump in Kathy's soup there. Is that fine with...
Yeah, I would think that if Ellen has the letter that she used from last time, that was a good letter.
Right, but are you fine with just starting with capital right now?
Right, that's what Ellen did. She put a letter out on capital, if I recall correctly. So we should get something started.
Okay. We'll get to work on that. Fiscal year '21, closing and submissions to the state. I went over that.
Yep.
From the town accountant.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
After speaking with the town accountant today, I mean, we should at some point get the Sarah to give us an update on the treasurer's department. Are we gonna make the...
Well, that's what you and I were gonna do, I thought.
Oh, so we're gonna meet and just talk with her informally and...
Well, yeah, because I think we need to get some hard dates here, you know?
Okay, so after talking to her, we needed her to come in, then?
Yes.
Then let me know, let Catherine know.
That might need to happen.
And we'll put it on the agenda.
Trying to foresee that.
Just cost us money. I'm trying to save us a fund.
So we're gonna need, we're gonna need to think about a town meeting, probably in November.
Right, I was trying to look at my month. How about, how about if we pick like a tentative date?
Might cost me money, I don't know.
What about, what about... Well, November 1st is the day before Election Day. That's what my calendar says. Is there, so maybe the next week, November 8th?
November 8th is a regular meeting night.
I know, but we need to do it in a small town meeting.
We could do that. Schedule, tentative schedule for a town meeting from the fall, November 8th.
Is that good with everybody? That's our normal meeting night, anyway. And is there any possible way we can send out a message that we are not opening up this warrant for everything you forgot to get? You know what I mean? I mean, honestly, we still don't know if we have a balanced budget. We're gonna be taking money out of stabilization primarily, right?
It's gotta come from somewhere.
I mean, well, I don't, I don't think we dare do any raise in appropriates, because have you looked at the revenue report?
There's nothing to raise in appropriate.
Right, the revenue report, it doesn't, I don't know that it's hitting the mark on the tax collection. I'm a little worried.
We need to know how much is in stabilization. I asked the question.
Oh, we do, we have them.
Is it a million, or is it two million?
Did you ask, did you ask tonight?
She didn't have an answer for it.
Didn't have, okay.
To have to reconcile cash and find out what we got.
No, stabilization doesn't, that's...
How much is in stabilization?
Let me see, I'll look in the last audit report.
But if they certify cash, if there is free cash, it gets added to stabilization.
No, 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 those are separate. No, no.
Where's that going?
Stabilization is a whole separate account. It doesn't...
It's like the rainy day Tuesday fund.
Well, yeah, but it doesn't get, it does not get washed out with...
It's our reserves. It's two million bucks, at least.
I'm just looking to see if I have the audit report, have our numbers.
Balance sheet here?
How much is it? I think we got $2 million, don't we?
We do, we have, hey, don't get carried away with it. We had a good amount.
We can go spending.
Stop. Took us a long time to get...
Gonna be a liberal now.
Okay.
Maybe we can get a balance sheet from Ellen for the next...
All right, so we got it tentatively scheduled for November 8th.
I got the report, find it, it's somewhere.
Old business. Findings of the Administrative Coordinator Subcommittee. We did get the, we did get the paperwork for both candidates, and we've scheduled a meeting for the 21st to interview them.
Yep.
So we're all set on that. Update on the Water and Sewer Highway Union contract negotiations, anything on that? Jason, Kathy?
No.
No, I have to check and see if he's cut, he has not been responsive, so I'm gonna have to check my email, make sure I didn't miss it, but I will check.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'm confused. My agenda says findings of the Administrative Coordinator Subcommittee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I read that wrong. Administrative Coordinator Subcommittee? That was Jason and, so I'm sorry, I read that wrong. My fault. That was Jason and Dan, and they did meet.
And I think, I think we already covered everything that was...
I think we covered about everything on that.
Which page do you look at? You're an accountant.
What do you wanna show me?
Police union contract review and signing. I don't think we've got that back yet. Bill, you were working on that?
Jennifer Smith did reach back out to me, to ask me what page the typos are on. I did immediately reach back out to her, and tell her it was a page on 13, and the eights seemed to be, the dollar signs seemed to be replaced with eights. She thanked me, but I haven't heard anything back from her on when the revised copy was...
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting, and see if we can get something done within the two weeks. Waste management discussion. Kathy, you wanna handle that? You were working on that, the waste management discussion?
Yes, so I did, what I would like permission is to kinda see if Rebecca can follow up with the town attorney, that I'm back at work now. He was trying to reach me while I was in the meeting. He had just a couple of questions on the contract that we need to sign with Waste Zero. I just wanted to make sure the contract was okay with them. So he had a couple of questions, and since Rebecca was good enough to look at the procurement of it, if it's all right with you, I'm gonna see if she has time to touch base with him during her workday. And if not, I will follow up more after I get out of work tomorrow.
I had a question on it.
Yes, go ahead.
I read, I read this over in page seven.
I'm just gonna write down what...
The Waste Zero fixed fee per first order, $13,597.50, can we get an explanation on that one?
Yes, so initially, what will happen is we'll buy, like, it'll be like a one or two-year supply of the bags, right? And we will front that up, but then...
We'll front the $13,597.50?
Probably, yeah, out of the trash contract. But then what happens is, they make them down in the Carolinas, I think South Carolina. They have a warehouse up here in Massachusetts where they will store it all for us. And then they coordinate with the retailer, so they bring them a case. Let's say Jerry's agrees to sell them. They bring them a case, and then 30 days later, the bill is due for that case. Now, in case Jerry's hasn't sold the whole case, what they can do is just not pay the bill. There's no fines or penalties on this billing. Once they sell the case, they pay the Waste Zero, and then every month, Waste Zero wire transfers to us the money and a statement of how many bags we've sold. And they keep 39 cents of each bag sale. We get $2.11 per bag. And so if we wanted to have some at the Board of Health, like, I guess Deb said Lori would like to have some available here, in that case, we've already paid for them. So when she takes in the money here, just go ahead and deposit it. What I would like to do, I think, is ask town attorney if we can have a recycling revolving account for this money, because I would like it to be available for things that are connected with the trash contract and recycling.
So that money's gonna come from...
From Waste Zero. They wire transfer monthly.
No, the, the, the fixed, $13,597.
That will come from the trash money, yeah.
That'll come from the trash money.
Yeah.
Can we, and my other question was, on that, was that, that's over the $10,000. Does that need to go out to bid? Maybe we can check with town accountant, town accountant, I mean, town attorney when we...
Well, those are the questions. So Rebecca said no, because she found a part of the law that said because it has to do with trash, it doesn't apply. Now Courtney from Waste Zero said they're on the state bid list. So I sent all that back to the town attorney, and that's when I was, that's when our meeting began.
Well...
So the town attorney is questioning the same thing that you are? Rebecca said no, it doesn't apply. Courtney said they're on the state bid list, so I'm waiting for these three to sort it out.
Well, what bothers me is...
Yes?
I mean, we've been going through this for, seems like a couple of months, but...
Yes.
And this is the first I heard that we're gonna have to foot $13,000, 13 and a half.
No, I believe I told you, we would initially purchase the bags. I mean, how else would we get them? They're gonna, they're gonna produce these bags with our town name on them. They're our bags. And she said initially, people tend to go out right away and buy a little roll of them or whatever, and then it dies down a little bit. But over time, people tend to buy them, they carry them, they'll carry them at the supermarket, hopefully, at Jerry's, on Nicole's. You know, the idea is to put them in places where you normally would go, so you're not having to drive out of your way to buy some extra bags to throw some stuff out.
And way to increase foot traffic to the merchants.
Well, yes, that's the idea. They can put a sign in their window that they're...
So they win too.
Yes, so they get a little, maybe someone needs to get a, you know, get a quart of milk. They go in there to Jerry's, because they can get their Waste Zero bags.
I mean, these, these, I'm just gonna throw this out, and then I'll turn the floor over to you.
Sure.
You're asking these business establishments to sell these bags, put them on their shelves or wherever, not get a penny out of it?
Yes.
Because you're anticipating to increase people going into the store?
Yes.
Well, I'm not sure that that's gonna work, but...
Well...
I mean, if I was a business, I don't want something on my shelf that's not gonna sell. It's taking up space, but anyway...
Sort of a community thing, I guess, I think Merrimack is involved with doing the Waste Zero bags, so we could reach out and ask them.
Dan, and then Jason, Dan, go ahead.
If we haven't signed the, well, they added the addendum or exhibit, and it was 500 a case, I believe?
Yeah.
But then they say there's a minimum, and it's 13,000 and change for the...
Yes.
Well, that's the first I ever heard of it. So I voted against it, but the board voted for it. So if we didn't know about that, then we gotta go back and say, we voted for your agreement, but we got bushwhacked with 13 grand.
No.
Tear it down to two cases, or one case, or something.
Kathy, Jason wanted to speak after him, and Dan's not done.
So my question to this board, was it negotiated that we were gonna buy a minimum of $13,000 in trash bags up front? I don't remember here.
I don't remember that. Jason, you had a question or comment?
Yes, the only comment I had was to you in terms of the participation from the retailers. I don't know if it was Waste Manag, Waste Zero, but Abashon is selling overflow bags for Havel.
Who is?
Abashon.
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 Oh, so they...
But it's in Havel, it's in Havel.
No, but people go there and grow.
They're gonna do all the towns?
Who knows? But it is common practice, and it's common practice especially for the supermarkets. Because I know when I lived in Plantation, Florida, they didn't have trash service. You bought your bags, all the bags, there was no extra bags, and you picked them up at the supermarkets. So it's fairly common, and I don't think it'll be an issue.
And also recall that the idea is to hopefully encourage people to channel, we have a very low percentage in our recycling stream right now. 22% is low compared to other towns around us. Even a 5% increase of items going into recycling instead of their trash can will save us the difference between $84 a ton and $38 a ton. And then if people do wanna throw out more things, they're cleaning something out, they buy some bags, we get $2.11 a bag. You know, I thought maybe we'd pick up another $6,000 a year. You know, you clean out your attic, whatever you do. You do have a way of getting rid of your trash. And honestly, this'll be a much more neat, orderly, and I would suspect for the trash hauler, easier pickup. So you won't have these piles of things on top of trash cans. You'll have the trash can, and then the overflow bags. Most towns have changed to something like this, and it's been working out. But I am making sure that the town attorney and Rebecca, everybody who deals with this stuff is looking it over for us, so that before we sign it, we're solid on it.
Well, I'm a little surprised that this is the first that I was aware of this upfront cost that we have to foot.
Well, how else...
If you take $13,000, $597, and divide it by, we'll say, two and a quarter, we gotta sell an awful lot of bags to get our money back.
Well, it's over a period of time.
Is that in the budget?
No, it was, no, this is coming out of the trash contract.
Well, yes, but with this...
I voted for this zero, Waste Zero thing, but I'm having second thoughts now. I voted for it, and I'd like to move forward with a reconsideration. I, I don't know, this is just a surprise to me.
If I could try to convince you, would you listen for a moment?
Well, if you can show me some paperwork that indicates that this was brought up before, but this is, this is just, it looks like it's being slid in here that we didn't, luckily, I read every page here.
I don't think I slid it in there. I didn't, I never would have intended to, but I did provide you with the cost analysis that showed that what we're trying to do is a two-pronged approach here. One is by limiting the barrels, we're trying to encourage people, take a look at something and see if you can recycle it versus put it into the trash line, because we pay $84 a ton for trash. And we only pay $38 a ton for recycling. Big cost differential. And the second thing is, with the overflow bags, this way, people who need to throw out additional items, for whatever reason, they still have a means to do that. But understand, this company is going to mass produce these bags with our town's name on it. They don't just make a colored bag. It has to be identifiable as a Groveland bag. So they're not gonna just make 100 of them or something, you know? You buy a one or two-year supply, and then you don't pay again. You just start selling and getting money in. So it will come back to us.
I agree with you on all those points.
Yes.
But what I can't agree on is, this is the first time I've seen this. And why wasn't this told, it was before? 13 and a half thousand dollars that...
Let me go look.
Are you gonna let me finish?
Well, I'm looking to see what I presented to you.
We didn't know anything about this until, until tonight.
Did we sign it? Did we sign it?
No, we're not signing it yet. We're still, town attorney is still...
And the other thing...
Wanna go back to them?
Well, well, I believe, my recollection is you voted no on it.
I voted no, but...
So I voted in favor of it, so I would have to move for a reconsideration.
But they can print his number of bags, you know? I can order 50 pens with my name on them. They can sell you 500 bags with Groveland on them. It's just the print and press, the computer program, and it spits them out.
How many, how many bags is this 13,5? About 6,000 bags?
It's, scale it back. I mean, buy like two cases or five cases, but 13 grand's bushwhacking us. You know?
Agreed.
If I'm stuck with a 4-1 vote on it, then go back and knock down the 13 grand. We got blindsided. What are they gonna do, say no? If they say no, you say no contract. We reconsider it, and you get nothing. No soup for you. I think they'll backpedal on it and work with us.
The only thing that, the only thing that bothers me on all of this is I got, I got the, I got the bills from Waste, from town accountant for just on, just on trash, just on the trash contract. It's about $2,500 just on, that we've been paying KP Law for negotiating this trash contract. It...
Yes.
It, I mean, that just seems ridiculous.
Well, how come those aren't on the variance report? Well, how come those aren't on the variance report? That was my question at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, I know. I just found these here.
I know. I mean, you're sitting there with the bills and I asked you.
Well, I didn't realize I had, I got it. Seven one.
Could we have copies of those so that you're not the only one that has these?
Um, sure.
Yeah.
I don't see why not.
Ed, I hear your comment. Go ahead and try and make your reconsider. I won't change my vote. I think this, this type of program.
I, I'm gonna make a motion to reconsider the Waste Zero program based upon the fact that the thirteen thousand, five hundred that we weren't made aware of. Mike, could I trouble you one more time? Please?
I'll second that and have a quick discussion point.
Have we paid those bills?
Um, can you, can you do, uh, I think just the. First, first two pages. Thank you. Good thing it's stuck around. So I, I wanna make a motion to reconsider the Waste Zero program with, unless we can lower that thirteen thousand five.
Well, I can ask her about lowering it, but I'm not gonna vote to reconsider. I mean, we're still talking to the attorney about the contract.
Uh, is there, I made the motion. Is there, is there a second on that?
About a second from Dan.
Oh.
With the discussion point.
All right, go ahead.
Kathy's already agreed to it. I mean, does it, is it any skin off our noses? I don't know that time is of the essence. But can we go to them and say, listen, we're a little bit surprised by the thirteen thousand dollar bill?
I can speak to her about that.
Can you scale it back to three and maybe we can.
I don't think that, I don't think that the time is the essence because we're not, this isn't going to affect until January first.
That's what I'm saying. We have plenty of time to react, so we should horse trade with these people. The thirteen grand's the high water mark. We're not digging.
So do you wanna give them a figure?
I think we agreed at maybe three grand is being reasonable. I just, that'd be my suggestion.
Well, Kathy can forward to them the recommendation of three grand instead of fifteen.
No, I'm not gonna.
That's my friendly amendment.
There's no vote of the board on that. So what I will say is that I.
Well, then we'll, um.
Go ahead and call for your vote.
We, uh, the motion and a second for the reconsideration. Uh, any further discussion? None.
Yeah.
But go ahead.
The thirteen thousand, I'm pretty sure I was made aware of it, is initial investment into the bag program. And if everything works right, the idea behind this is the best way to change and modify behavior is monetarily. So if everything works as it's supposed to, the town should get this money back in triplicate, in spades, because.
Thank you.
The difference between, as Kathy said, the difference between.
Thank you, sir.
The cost to throw it in the landfill as opposed to recycle is.
Thank you, Kathy.
Two to one. So if we can modify enough behavior in the last six months of fiscal twenty twenty-two, this is chump change compared to a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar trash collection annual bill.
Okay, the motion on the floor with a second. Any further discussion? None. The vote is to reconsider with the, the Waste Zero with the thirteen thousand. All in favor of reconsideration? To oppose. To, Jason?
I'll be opposed.
Oppose. It failed. Okay. Uh, Dan, you wanna, uh, do you wanna make a suggestion that you go with Kathy? That she can go to them and ask you, three, three thousand, you said?
I thought they just shot that down.
Well, no, that was a reconsider, reconsideration of the vote.
I'm, I'm willing to go and talk and ask her about lowering below the thirteen thousand, but I'm pretty sure they're gonna have to do some kind of a bulk purchase. So let's, let's see what they'll go for. I don't wanna set a number. It's not gonna be three thousand. I'm sure it's gonna be more.
It's seven thousand bags if I did the math correctly.
Okay. So she said a one or two years' supply. I can ask her, I can ask her if she can give us a one-year supply. See if she'll go for that.
Probably gonna buy a couple just because I, I know I'm gonna use them. I, I know I'm gonna have the need to use one or two here and there.
They make good Christmas gifts, too.
I'm gonna get my backyard incinerator going.
Oh, yeah, your wife is really gonna love that, Bill.
You should have a town incinerator. We could charge for that, huh?
What's Kathy gonna get from her husband? Is it, is it five trash bags? Five purple trash bags.
That's right. It's the gift that keeps on giving.
It's getting late, Bill. You know how it gets.
All right. Uh, so we'll go with that. Next on the agenda is hiring of a treasurer collector.
Yeah, we're still in the tricks in between. Um.
Can we agree to meet Thursday with Sarah or in at least one of, or two of those?
I didn't get the, where are the resumes?
They, they don't go to me directly. They go to, they go to the inbox and then.
I don't have a password for that.
There's no password.
You're supposed to.
There's no password.
So I could just get to that box?
Catherine sends them to you. She said she sent them to you.
Oh, okay. Maybe I just didn't see them. Okay.
She sent them to you.
Let me look.
Kathy, Kathy, the email, the resumes were emailed to you directly.
Oh, okay. So is it from you? It's under your name then?
It would have come from me, yes.
Okay, I'll find it.
I thought the idea though was we were gonna set up a separate mailbox for that, that you were gonna have, the two of you were gonna have access to twenty-four seven.
Oh, my God.
And they sent them directly to us?
No, 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 no.
I wasn't.
We were gonna set up a mailbox called.
So that we could go in and just.
Treasurer Collector at Groveland Mass.
Cause I'm losing stuff in my email now.
And the resumes were to be forwarded to that email address.
Yeah.
And you, the two of you were supposed to have twenty-four seven access to that mailbox so that nothing got missed. Nothing got skipped. Nothing got overlooked. And it was, you know, your responsibility to monitor that one mailbox that only had that one thing going to it.
I'm aware of the two resumes that came in. So I told Kathy about them and.
You told me. I know. I'm just, I don't.
Told you about them a week ago.
I know. I asked.
I tried to be helpful.
You do. I agree.
So we're working on that.
And we're all busy. It's fine. It's fine.
Uh, Monday night, uh, Monday night hours, next on the list.
Six thirty.
No, we'll be here till twelve then.
Compromise six.
Five thirty's fine.
Six, gotta work. Nine to five.
I think that was, that had to do with opening the town hall on Monday nights.
Yeah, I agree, Ed.
It's tough.
That's right. We didn't do that yet, did we?
And it's gonna get hotter. I ran home cold. Microwave.
Any thoughts on Monday night hours for the town hall? And at that point, we'd have to readjust some of these employees' hours.
Well, the ones that have to be open at night, right? So it's just the clerk, the treasurer, the assistant treasurer is supposed to be here, and the assessor's office. Is that it?
Assessor, probably assessor, administrative coordinator.
I don't think the administrative coordinator is in the bylaw to be have our.
No, it did, no, it's not in the bylaw, but it, uh, and I don't know if the, I don't think the accountant was in on that.
No, the accountant is not.
Economic Development Director, perhaps.
I don't know if that's in our bylaw, though. I think our bylaw just says the town clerk.
Well, we can look that up and, uh, uh, we wanna take a vote on when they open them or just hold off for a bit.
Well, right now, anybody that comes in, and Dan, you're supposed to be wearing a mask too. They, the Board of Health has posted masking time.
Well, you tell me at ten o'clock at night?
I know, right?
I mean, I'm not sitting here being obstinate. I just didn't think.
Yeah, they, they did. They, they posted, they told the police.
Are they the boss of me? I thought we ran the show.
No, they're the boss of us when it comes to the COVID. I guess the COVID numbers have gone up enough that for now, they want everybody masked, even this building.
Science said if you're unvaccinated.
No, they changed it.
They changed it.
I went and got my measles, mumps, and rubella shot, so I'm good.
Okay.
You know I said all this.
So we'll, you wanna let that slide for another couple of weeks until we get?
Well, yeah, because the numbers are kinda up on the, um, on the COVID right now.
Okay, so we'll hold off on Monday.
For unvaccinated people.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
My wife's a nurse and she said the people coming in are mostly unvaccinated people.
Well, yeah, but I mean, the, all these buildings now are masked.
All right, selectmen's time. Uh, Dan, do you have any, uh, Jason, you have anything under selectman's time?
No.
Kathy, anything under selectmen's time?
No, just pass on that the Board of Health is informing. They posted for this building and the police and fire, everybody has to be masked up again.
Uh, Dan, you have anything under selectmen's time?
Yeah, Kathy gave me her laptop. Yeah, she was nice to do that and.
You can't keep it.
Showed me a financial statement and, uh.
Did you find it?
As of the last fiscal year, the fund balance, unassigned balance was two million, two hundred forty-one thousand and.
Shh. Don't spread that.
What'd they say? We got a couple million bucks.
We're millionaires.
Doesn't go as far as it used to.
We should all get company cars. I always wanted a blue plate on my car. It's my dream in life, you know?
Move to a state that has them. Now, Bill, you got anything under selectmen's time?
Yeah, two things I want to remind everyone again about the free Chesterton, A W Chesterton Vaccine Clinic, where they'll be doing it on September twenty-third from ten to twelve. At the lobby of Building B, they'll have the Pfizer and Johnson and Johnson vaccine available. Also, I'd like to remind everyone, I think it's before our next meeting, of Groveland Day. A great, great celebration of the town and its people and its history and heritage that was unfortunately postponed last year due to COVID, but it is back again in full swing. I encourage everyone to come down, visit your neighbors, uh, share a story that we might not have heard about the town and its residents before. Indulge in some of the, um, food and beverage that might be down there and just come on and have a great time. It's supposed to be a great weekend, I hope, weather-wise, and it's really, it's really an outstanding time.
Yet the times?
Uh, it's, it runs from, I believe, ten to four or, as long as we can, as long as there's people out there that are willing, you know, and enjoying themselves, I don't think they'll be packing up early.
What's in the evening? Is that, is that when the beer license was for?
The evening is the twenty-fourth and that's the road race they have on the Friday night before Groveland Day on Saturday.
When's the beer truck there?
I believe that's Friday night after the road race.
After the race.
Right. They have a food truck too, right? Bill, don't they have food that, that night too?
The Boy Scouts will, I don't, I think the Boy Scouts might be cooking that night too. I'm not quite sure. But there will be food and beverage on both, uh, both days. Um, just remind everybody, folks, that kids are back in school. Please drive safely. Don't drive on sidewalks trying to pass school buses. We will catch you. We will arrest you and we will throw you in jail. Um, and that's it.
And before everybody leaves, there's the, uh, the liquor license needs to be signed by everybody for that. I just got two things under, uh, selectmen's time. At the last meeting, we were, uh, we did talk about, about grants. That Rebecca, uh, the highway superintendent, the fire chief have, uh, have got since, uh, two thousand and nineteen, Rebecca and the fire chief since he got here about twenty months ago. Just as an update, Rebecca and Rennie, who coordinated, helped coordinate with a lot of these in collaboration with them, uh, she's brought in to date from fiscal year two thousand and nineteen to date, one million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-three cents that is brought in on grants. Uh, and there's a, under a number of, uh, different, uh, things, uh, mass DOT, private, uh, private foundation for the dog park, et cetera, et cetera. And also, there's a couple that are on, uh, that haven't been approved yet. One, community planning for seventy-five thousand and one for Mass Works Department of Transportation for three hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, those have been applied for but haven't been received yet, whether they get them or not. And the fire chief, uh, he's, uh, he's received several, uh, safe grants. Safer Grant for full-time firefighters, three-year salary benefits, COVID-nineteen personal protection equipment of seven thousand. Uh, the three-year salary and benefit, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety. Uh, some, uh, Safe Grant, Student Awareness of Fire Education, Senior Awareness of Fire Education, totaling approximately five hundred and five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. So between the two of them, uh, the three of them, it's close to, uh, one point six million. So that, uh, all three of those individuals should be congratulated for being able to bring in this amount of money.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, can I ask a question about grants? I was talking to somebody who was, uh, said there was a grant or potentially a grant for a salary survey? Is that something that could be pursued or is it something that was already pursued in, in the works?
Uh, I don't see it on here, Dan. I don't see it on here.
Might be being looked at.
You had a?
Yes, it is in the works.
Oh, good.
Who's working on it?
The, where the grant comes from, we already have a grant that we have to, that they want us to fulfill before they move forward with that grant. Um, if I.
Who's they?
The email correctly. So it's all being worked on.
Who's they?
Rebecca.
She's working on it. And where's the grant come from? Is it come with the Mass Department of Revenue?
Those community pack things or whatever, right?
Yeah.
The community pack, whatever that is.
Like a state.
So if we could pursue that, a lot of what we've been discussing.
Yes.
Cordially.
I know.
We could put to rest, cause then we'll have good facts to make good decisions on.
Exactly.
Doesn't mean we'll have the money to.
I understand that. We'll say, jeez, we can't afford everybody. It's better just not knowing and saying this is what we got.
No, it's better to know. Better to know.
Sometimes you gotta move on to McDonald's because Burger King can't pay you.
I understand.
But when they did that for Merrimack, they showed how much adjustment people made.
These two, uh, these three people, uh, I just think it's incredible, one point six million dollars, one, pretty close to one point seven million that they brought in. That's, that's unbelievable with four hundred and fifty-five thousand that have been applied for, haven't received any. The other thing that I had was our administrative coordinator took an online class last Thursday. Had to do with, uh, alcohol license renewals that'll be coming up, um, here shortly. So it helped her out with the procedures and what needs to be done. So that was.
Speaking of classes.
What's that?
Speaking of classes, I was on the board years ago. There was like a list and you can pick and you can select some courses, Board of Selectmen, continuing ed type thing.
Uh, yeah, uh, those are kind of, uh, those are kind of stopped because of the pandemic. Uh, they used to have those legislative breakfasts that they had during the winter.
Yeah, somebody sponsored it, Mass Municipal, whatever.
On Mass Municipal.
There was a whole list of them.
No, they, they do. You can get on.
You still get, there are a lot of online classes that you can do.
You should be on, on trying the email list yet. You'll get bombarded.
Yeah.
The Mass Municipal.
Do I belong to that now?
Yeah, you're a selectman.
You should be getting those, uh, you should be getting those.
Where's my card? My membership card?
They don't do that anymore.
Did you pay your fee?
I don't pay anything. I don't pay.
The mail, you're a fickle card.
No, I don't wanna pay anything. I want.
I don't know reasonably anticipated, uh, I don't think we have anything under that. Correspondence, resignation of Megan McCabe, U Services Librarian effective September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, email from Joe Demore, date eight nine, twenty twenty-one. I think that was what, what I had alluded to before, but put it under the wrong category was the candidates. Let them from, uh, from EP Management, dated eight twenty-five, twenty-one, regarding the town Groveland Condominium Trust right next door with a water issue. Uh, the next meeting of the Board of Select will be Tuesday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, to conduct town administrator interviews and that should be at five thirty.
Yep.
And the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Select will be Monday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. And that should be at five thirty. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at nine thirty-seven.
I'll second it.
But.
But, there's no but.
Oh, oh.
We're good.
I'll second it.
Yeah, yeah. All right, motion to, uh, motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Yep, thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, we got this, uh, liquor license that needs to be signed by everybody.